Okay, so we'll call the work sessions to order if it's clock. And um. Focus on this, this council rule. Um, we'll start with an arrange for this thing. Not sure if there's anybody online, does anybody in the audience want to be in an arrange? Okay. See if they're online. That's just us, right? Okay, so we are down at council rules. Joe. Um, I spent a lot of time over the weekend going through, again. Going through essentially the new. Uh, proposed item or new proposed rules. Um. Primarily to identify what is that might be missing from the existing rules and the new rules. Um. I'll say when I say before and that's, I'm okay with the rules the way they are. I know there was a. Express desire to have a better format and the, the new format is a format people like. I'm willing to go through and take, if given the new, the two files to put the current rules into the new one. I think one of the things that makes this difficult and took so long to go through and review is that. The new format doesn't highlight. Where the existing, I mean, it does say in some cases where the existing rules are, but a lot of cases, those rules have changed at some point. And the changes aren't necessarily itemized or highlighted there. And so that made it difficult to go. So. So like I said, if you want to go through, I got all my notes, got all my markups. Like I said, I'm okay with them the way they are. I don't know that anything in here that I think that said, oh, we gotta have that change. But. There.
So something that occurred to me while I was looking at what has been added with. Council member who shall put together is that there are a lot of sections of this that are taken from the open meetings act. Um. So. For, to me, they can be referenced back versus all being added here. We have to follow the open. Act meetings act anyways. And if there is a change in that and we have this spelled out on ours, it makes ours immediately out of compliance or out of. You know. That complaint. So, and we have to go through it again. So to me. It's more beneficial. To not repeat all of that here in different sections and just to reference back to the open meeting. Yeah, yes, it might be difficult for, for the residents, I understand. Maybe that's something the language that is input that. We follow that and it needs to go back to that, but it's. I, I'm just concerned that if it is. Just a repetition of what is an open speeding back here as soon as there is a change there, our document will be out of compliance that we have to rework.
Yeah, so your point is we don't need to have it twice.
Yeah.
Well, but that's, it's a good point about it potentially being out of date. And if we want to reference it, we could put it on. Right use of the council rules on the same place on the website until that's available.
Exactly, yeah. It can't be the document I'm saying that.
Yeah.
OMA, right, is just referring back to it is more helpful in case that is changing.
And then if there's like a summary, like a PDF summary, that's like a, here's, here's the simplified, you know.
I think that, that. A long, it's quite a long page.
That's.
Yeah, and we can just put that. There it's. Easy to reference back.
Thanks.
Yeah, I think one question to consider is what are we hoping to achieve with any rules document? So I'm trying to look back at our charter, for example, to figure out what actually is required. So six oh five of our charter. Organization rules and order of business. It says each council shall determine its own organization, rules and order of business subject to the following provisions. Uh, that the city clerk can keep. The minutes. And vote that will call except for procedural motion, um, to be required as part of that. So it seems like. What is actually required to be in any. Document regarding procedure, rules, order of business. Is largely up to us, except for what is explicitly stated here and possibly elsewhere, although I haven't found it yet. Um. And I think it's important that whatever rule, not if I adhere to them, I'm less inclined to want that our suggestion is. I would prefer a rule is that everybody on the council actually. Agrees with, um. So I'm in favor of rules that are less than more, I guess. So. I would be fine referring to external documents to the extent that any existing rules are just stating what an external document says. I'd be inclined to just say what's minimally necessary. So I don't know if anybody knows about this, what will be necessary in a set of rules. Or what would be struck from, even if you guys suggested, what would be struck that the reference to an existing document? What does that mean?
Do you feel, does anybody feel like the rules inhibit us? Or make us worse?
If there's not what's actually followed, I'm not saying there are, but um, if there's something here that we. Feel is not followed, there is, and your suggestion around it, that's something we're actually trying to achieve. And I'd be in favor of anyone.
Well, some, some of the. Um. Yeah, how we conduct our business every two weeks or throughout the course of two or four year period of. I mean, we've been there two years, one of those questions. But a lot, a lot of this is. You know, a lot of, I mean, first of all, I, I'm, I'm looking at the current version of the rules. Sorry, I'm trying to make this kind of, but. You know, the first couple of it. The first couple of rules, the way to just how we, how we run a meeting and the order of how we do everything every two weeks. Which makes sense to have an agreement on, I think, right? I mean, we've, we've disagreed or agreed on, you know, once you go first or second or. That, but it's. It's meant to be something that we're all. We're setting expectations and following. As best we can. I think that. You know, these are obviously an evolution over time. You know, as I was trying to. The date they were first adopted back in eighty six. You know, obviously amended as they, as they go. And it seemed like it worked in most parts. Most of. Time to, to think about it, so. They didn't know exactly.
Yeah, I mean, I'm happy to go ahead and make a specific thing as I scroll through all the existing minute. Opportunities, I think, for clarification.
Existing rules?
Yeah, so under two, three order of business, E non-arranged participation. I think the part is actually on top of page two in our packet for page three in our. Where it says the mayor and his or her discretion, they call on members of the audience to speak at any time or respond to their concern. My understanding is that applies to any part of the meeting. And so I think I would rather that statement be somewhere else. In the rule, uh, because somebody. Might not know to look at or not any participation. I mean, that's like a specific agenda item, but that sentence refers to the fact that at any point during the meeting, somebody could be called upon, so I'm not. I've thought yet where that could go. Um, and I think that could be pulled out, like if there's a section where it's just like general structure of a meeting. Uh, I think it might even help to clarify during, uh. Pre-arranged participation. Or even non-arranged participation, if this is what we'd like to continue doing. To let people know that. Council members typically don't engage in a conversation with those speaking during their return on or participation. I mean, I think we saw a resident came recently to talk about. The gas power blowers. She kind of stood there and was sort of confused as to what to expect if people are going to talk to you or not. And so we can make that more explicit, whichever way it's going to go. To make that part of that, um. Would be helpful, uh, also in that section where it says, any question posed at this time will be responded to by the city manager if it ever does a meeting within forty eight hours. I'm going to guess that that doesn't always happen. Um, in my experience, it did not happen. Um, and I don't know if staff feels like that's. Accurate, um, or a fair request of them, um. And if not, or if yes, um, that confirmation, I guess, that that's happening, um. Or.
Do you have a suggestion for something different, or do you want to say something different?
I guess if we, if that's what we're going to handle it, then I just want confirmation that that is how it's being handled. And if it's not how it's being handled, then I'd rather that be removed. Um, and if we think we want some process for. What happened with questions posed by residents during that time. Then I'd like a conversation about that. I mean, I guess if in fact the city manager or his or her designee is getting back to members of the public, um. Like if it's be an email from them, it would be great for like council to be easy to see that now, so we understand what the ongoing communication is. But it's not like people stand up there and give us their email address either.
Really?
Um, or phone number, right? And if they don't give any of that, is the staff number supposed to go to their home, you know, the address that they provided during the comment? So. One, I don't know if that's just a procedure we want. Do we want any procedure? And if so, what would it be?
And I would also import to that, that it would be better to say somebody went to business days because forty eight hours might be if somebody's coming home, be Friday morning, it's Sunday, or we expect. Right, over the weekend response is something that if we decide to add something like that, it's better to do with the business day.
Right. Or even something like, if you would like a response to your question. Please put those questions to the city manager. Whatever Google responds, you know, someone. But.
Well, Jamie, I, you know, I appreciate what you're talking about, but you know, I could read. Well, it's under there every time on the agenda too. Or exactly your comment about the mayor and his discretion, they call on members that are, you know, in brand of, of thirty three. But I, I have over here the justice draw, how good of. Not arranged meeting. Understood what that is. You know, people who are here to watch, they can understand where they want to do. Maybe I've gotten used to that, but it's quite certain to make us part of the normal record.
Right.
The meaning that, in light of trying to put in someone else that doesn't necessarily flow, it is early enough on the agenda that. If somebody heard that, they would wear a mask, right? But I, I, to personally, as I look at this thing. I don't usually read that paragraph.
Yeah. Yeah, I, yeah, I think it would be helpful both to clarify the language and, um. All points and then to then actually say it at every meeting. Kind of paraphrase it.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that.
And then I think you're pointing on follow up, I think, putting something in there about, you know, submit your question by email or. Call.
Yeah, if you are, if you're responding to your question, additional information.
Um, just for example, with the last, um, all the time I worry about lawyers, I mean, at that point, it's, you know, the council. Policies that have, and my response would essentially be. I'll talk to council about it.
Right, right. Or to say, reach out to a particular council member and see if they're willing to, you know, advance this on your behalf or something like that.
There? Yep, so. My apologies for tardiness. I was wrestling with the printer and computer. Uh, I lost. Um. So I'll start by saying those who spent any more than fifteen minutes talking to me know about my love for process and procedure and predictability. It comes from planning, making sure that folks have predictability, they understand what's going to happen. I recognize that that is outside the standard deviation for the comfort level of this council, but it's much more comfortable at doing ad hoc and figuring things out as they happen. So I present, well, one of the things, the guiding star for me is. Don't put something in there that you're not going to follow, we're not going to do. That creates all sorts of challenges. So I did another draft, the bare bones. It's, if we change the font, we can get it on a page. Uh, kind of tools. Other things that aren't on here, we can figure out as we go. Um, I would caution that there is a. A shortness, balance, so that this is really short, it doesn't repeat. And there's been discussion about not repeating other bits of the meetings act and freedom of nation act or charter. It makes the document itself look very small and brief and compact and simple. But it places a greater demand on the folks. Using it and responsible to it to now know the open meetings act. To know that you can't talk with more than three members of the council on the topic. To know that if you use your personal email or your work email, that that subject for you in seizure. Um, but again, I draft this. Simple version as clean as possible, so that folks will know it and understand it. That's all.
So, um, and I think Zach walked in a little bit. At the middle of my comment, I just want to make sure that he knows what my comment was, that the reason I brought it up was that if. We have everything spelled out. Happy from any of those documents, if any change happens to those documents, it makes our. Document out of compliance immediately. So. Um, in thing, we, we do have to follow those and it makes it easier to just refer back and it makes it easier for our. And, you know, in. In terms of. I, I appreciate that you put this document together, that it's. Um. I think just as you said, bare, bare minimum. I think there is a. Somewhere in between, um, for me that that's. Just really bare minimum, bare minimum on what you provided in the past was, you know, a lot of. Different things coming together. Um. I think there are areas that, um, you know, Jamie mentioned that are there things that we can look at what we have. I think I, I agree with that approach that there are parts that we know is going back to documents such as. Open meetings act and such in, in our original or current council rules. Um. And then if there are parts that. We, the council agreed to take out or add, we, we should do that. Um. But then this was, of course, a decision of the council. Or in the, the one pager or one and a half pager that you have, there are areas that. Have not been mentioned that I personally think should be part of.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think there could be a blended approach between our new rules and this more abbreviated set and just. You know, quick notes, for example. So the new abbreviated rules start with regular meetings. We just talked about how the front half kind of is just saying that when we're meeting and, you know, even to start order of business. There are, you know, aspects we could take of. You know, rule one to have this intro type thing and then put underneath that our existing rule one. Are, um, and then under, like our existing rule two about the agenda, so two, one, two, two, and two, three. Those could go under this new rule of three words agendas and packets. So then you sneak those under there. You know, sort of move that was under there. Um, I think that. You know, recorded record of meeting. That's, you know, kind of under this new rule of four. Behavior of council members seems like it would potentially just go away entirely. Um. I don't know. The purpose of like our existing rule for the mayor or any council member may request a roll call of the council and the first call of the names of absent teeth. Is it something that's faded somewhere else?
It's in the charter, everything except for procedure will have to be my role, I'll vote. So it's not really necessary.
But this is just a roll call, does any roll call vote? That, I read that to mean just like they request a roll call, like who's here or not, and then it says. Absent or without reasonable cause. It's like it's getting a, who's here and who's not. Anyways, um. I'm inclined to get rid of rule four unless there's something we need. Uh. Anyway, I don't know, there's a possibility where we take this and blend in this. That is all I'm saying is it seems like there's some structure that could exist. I mean, I don't know if we go through it and say, who likes the existing rule one? Who likes the existing rule two? You know? And then if we get to the content that we like, or somebody organized it and presented that one. Seems like trying to address all that and all of it's not working.
Why do you say it's not working? We have essentially the same rules we've had the last. For the last several years, or how do you say it?
I'm thinking the conversations that are about the rules and their priority seems to not really generate any change, except like. New complete documents, but the new sets of rules. And so I'm not saying anything about what any of the sets of rules are, but I'm just saying nothing else to abandon this process. Maybe what we need to do is just go rule by rule, do we like this rule? Do we, do we want this rule on this content? Do we want the next rule on that content? Seems like there are two questions, content and format. But it seems like it's kind of like every time we talk about it, we're talking about a whole one, like content and format. So like this is a format. But it also deals with content. Or there's a different format, but there are also content things dropped down in it. So I don't know, we just start with content. And then figure out what's left and then how do you organize that?
Essentially, that's right, with the very first markets that I did, to put the existing rules highlighted ones that I'm receiving discussion to change on. And put judgment together. The, like I've said before, the thing is when we started with the new document, when we moved on to that. Just knowing what was in the old one versus what was in the new one, that was new, what was changed. That in and of itself, and take a couple hours to come through. I mean, literally, it's been over two hours still on Q one, but I'm. Last night, um, um, new versus the old, checking off and figuring out what from the existing rules is not, isn't a proposal. I understand what you're saying. I don't know. I don't think there's anything wrong with the existing rules. All the existing rules except for a couple are in the new ones. The new ones that are proposed has a lot more stuff, obviously. So. I mean.
Can we go rule by rule? I mean.
If that's how we want to do it, we can, we can do that, zero nine else tomorrow, but we have to.
Yeah.
If that's what you want to do. I, I don't want to be rude and say, no, I think it's much time, if you really want to go through it. You know, that's why I'm going to go through it.
Have we made progress, given everything else we've done until this point?
Yeah, I think we have. I think we got rules that have been around and certainly for a long time. And even to the point where all those existing rules are incorporated into what's proposed as a new set.
So then are we ready to make, take a vote where people want to just vote to adopt the rules as is, and if the majority want to do that?
We did, we did do that, I'll tell you.
Right. So do we need to take a worry of hands who wants to change any part of the rule? I mean, if people aren't open to that, it is a waste of our time to pretend that they are.
You, you literally just fifteen minutes ago said to be non-arranged participation, and you made a bunch of really good points, that would be good changes to that.
That's because they picked one specific thing to talk about that. And I think if we did that for each rule, we could actually make a progress.
Or we can each individually go through the rules and say, which things we think a lot of, you want to change on individual rules.
Wouldn't it be more efficient to do that when we're all at the table? I mean, otherwise we have seven different sets of written down humans. And then we're saying, okay, who is going to, you just said it was difficult to figure out what change I left in it, and it took me two hours. We're all at the table now. When that all was right here.
I'm just going to suggest that the, the previous one I, I wrote is withdrawn from any consideration, that's never going to get four votes. So let's just pin that. The one you just passed out? No. Original one. All right, well, let me, let me hear. Does anybody have comments on the rule, our current rule number one? I mean, we have current rules that are placed.
Right.
Are in the front of the pack, there. Does anybody have any suggestions on rule number one? There? So in the first. Sentence, the first paragraph there, it's, it's part of the open meetings act that we can adjourn to another location. So the second sentence in the first paragraph doesn't need to be there. Um, as far as the actual second and fourth Mondays and the time and the holidays and stuff, we adopt a meeting schedule at the end of every year for the next year. So the folks preparing that for us should already take care of that. I know I did that when I'm responsible for the commission's EVA and all that stuff. So we'll just say. We have to schedule when the meetings are.
To me, the first rule has everything that we have, we need, and I think we have language that helps. The public understand, um. What needs to happen.
Yeah, it's kind of why I asked what the purpose of the rules is, and if some of it is to communicate. Process to the public versus just to council members. I don't know to what extent the public can easily find this set of rules, for example. I don't know that I really can find it easily, but. If one of the purposes is to make sure that the public is aware of certain things, even if they exist in other documents, I'm fine including those additional details. And I think the ones that are here. Would be there, I think mostly just to inform members of the public when something is out before you.
I think there is the, there is a balance, right? How much of it do we add? Otherwise, we can, you know, just even include the. But the, I like the suggestion that Joe had, that maybe there are parts of this that we can just in parentheses add. OMA, that if it's a lo- larger, longer passage in that document. Maybe there is just a little bit of it here for reference or for helping the immediate things. If somebody wants. To go and read the longer one, they can go read the whole thing. Um.
So, so Jamie, if you know the government, city council roles are at the. Little two clicks from all there.
Okay, yeah, I have to look. I think there are times I felt like I had to search it within the site.
Now, if you're a member of the public wanting to find your reading dates, are you then look to the rules, to the date, the pages of all the reading days.
On the government or? But I think I'm going to find the look for it on the left under. City council. Where I still don't see it. I'm sorry, where did you go, government?
Well, if, if you click on government, right? And city council, the city council, right on the research, you've got city council.
And open objectives from twenty eighteen to nineteen. Uh, I find rule one evident. I think that there's a chance for part of the public to see it, and those additional details, even if redundant, are fine. I don't think you need the extra period after the PM in the second paragraph.
It doesn't address his workshops or special movements or emergency meetings.
Do you have that anywhere in?
No, this draft, no. Just separate. For the location. But not how we're set. I wouldn't notice.
I wouldn't notice.
We could add that if we're lacking clarity on something related to that topic, I'm happy adding something to the bottom.
What's the name, Sharon?
If there's some level of detail that's missing on something like, for example, meetings or special meetings and workshops, then I'm fine adding it. It seems, sounds like there might be, I don't know what that is. For example. They're called, how they're determined to be called. Do we say regular meetings go to second and fourth, but I guess we don't say anything about how does a special meeting get called? Is that said somewhere else?
No. Well. There's, there's nothing in the open meetings act or in the charter about special meeting.
Well, I think the. I mean, this is like regular business, it's just like every single, so you know, we might look and say, and then next time there's a pandemic or this. Next time that there are buyers.
Right. When we talk about exceptions for regular meetings following holidays or election days, it doesn't seem like it would take.
Because that happens every single year. If that's.
Yeah. How many times a year do we have special meeting?
Please drop this.
Well, to the city manager review, if we do it, which is usually a annual, that's a special meeting for one.
Yeah.
Every year, especially these.
But that didn't work out. Right?
Okay. So, so that, that there, there's the difference, you mean? I, I've always read a special. As something other than regular. Need, needing an additional meeting. I've never, I've never worried about whether it was an actionable meeting or not actionable meeting, which is how we're discerning workshops versus. Special meeting versus the old meeting that. I've always just meaning anything other than our normal course of business. That's how I've interpreted that word. And, and. I mean, I mean, we. We don't need to write in here. You know, the clerk knows the rules or what to do for those. Or at least all clerks who've ever had it, have to be gone doing that. You know, when they need to be posted dying, but they didn't say.
Just seems like there might be an opportunity here. If other people agree, there might be an opportunity to add additional clarification, I think, for the benefit of the public.
There is a difference between state law between special meetings and workshops.
Yep.
And I would argue it's the purpose of the rules to make sure that. The majority rules, but minority must be heard. And there's no guidance at all for how special meetings or workshops are called. At least once it here, we never voted on. We kind of said, here are some dates, let me know for objections. Without guidance on titles or set, that's a great way to make sure that only the four people. Who want to vote know that there's a special meeting coming up that gets called because there's no balance in here. Oh, it gets called. Aside from the open meetings act.
Well, we can add a sentence that is special meetings and work sessions follow the open meeting act. There is a on, on our work session page at the bottom, it said that this is the work session action will not be taken. So we are using other methods of informing the public of. What are the intention, intents of these meetings? Um, when there are closed sessions and the agenda is clearly marked on that. So maybe we just add a sentence that that's. Oh, the special meeting and. Work session meetings also, for being known that this is also followed. What the meetings are.
I'm not against adding a sentence because there's some evidence to think them, but they're quite what we're trying to do with them. I do, I want you to know that I never read it. That in all of our meetings are noticed.
Right. I just think there's a difference between, there's a difference between a regular meeting, a special meeting and workshop or a work session. And to the extent that we want to. Add additional clarification, there might be an opportunity to do that. I don't know if Zach wants to write something where.
Well. Really. Special council meetings and workshops will be held at the city hall at times on days approved by council regular meeting. For good clarity for how, how we'll set it. Well, because I mean, those folks are going to be here for regular meetings. They have an opportunity to participate in setting that.
But not every special meeting can be approved by council or the regular meeting. Sometimes meetings have to be called. Not everyone gets your rule with regular meetings, so I wouldn't fully agree with that sentence.
Well, that's an emergency meeting. We both need to manage.
All right. Well, I got, these are all versions of what I thought a good meeting did. I did define it, it's really not clear, but I mean, as a matter of practice. If they don't know if there's a problem, if they're solving. And I've got nothing clarified, really not unclear, it needs to be. But as a general matter of practice, I don't think it's misleading anyway. How, what would you say about emergency meetings then, Zach?
Like you see why I wrote this one?
Those results are supposed to run out.
Well, you're supposed to call it on what you added in the resource.
Me too.
But maybe back there.
You were sorry, the emergency.
What page is that?
Um. No, I, I got that the special one that was pitched.
So page four has a mission to decide.
So where did you, where did you get that language? Is that exactly out of somewhere? That. Two different CLs in the chart. Little ones.
So if we are having a natural disaster or a severe public health issue or safety. Isn't the expectation of the residents that we get together and figure it out as soon as possible? Would anybody come and tell us that, oh, you did not post this for however many days before? That the expectation of the government is to come together and figure it out as soon as possible.
I believe we have emergency manager ordinance like number three or four, something way back. My word about nuclear weapons coming in. And one person to be allowed to run the city government. So that's in there. Um, there is exception in open meetings act for those things. So I've got the MCL probably going up there.
The charter has regular meetings twice a month, special meetings is the only other category listed. And it can be called by the mayor, pre- members of council or in the open meetings act and then. Subject to their rights of media council, they need an emergency set. So.
Do you want me to just copy paste that yet?
No.
Or have it in the charter?
I mean. There is no reference to anything with a workshop or anything else. It's regular meeting, which is twice a month or another meeting, which is special.
Well, that's hundreds. I can only remember. I got a little relation when I, I can only remember. One meeting that was called. As emergency. And that was the day after the tornado. Or the, actually, it was, it was. It was like, who knows, like the second day, I, I didn't even do it the first day. It was, it was. And we, we noticed the eighteen hours or whatever we did. We met the basement of the U N C bank building. And that update from the sheriff, from the county department and the county. Everybody came to our meeting. And it was like in the. Will we make sure to follow up? I don't know, because I mean, everybody was on, Dan was on, we were already doing stuff. You know, without us. Taking action because I needed to, you know, you know.
I would support adding that first sentence from the charter from section six oh two to the minute. So right now in the first paragraph of rule one that I already listing minute.
Rules?
Yeah, in the rules, yeah, sorry. Says. Basically where the regular and special meetings, to all meetings, regular and special, where it's happening. Then the second paragraph is saying when the typical schedule for regular meeting. And then the third paragraph is saying. Exceptions to that typical schedule for the regular meeting. It seems like for completeness, because we talked about the location of special meetings. And we talked about the location and when regular meetings are happening. And we should add a line that says when special meetings happen, which could be just pulled from. The charter where it says special meetings may be held on behalf of the mayor or three or more things, and of course, with the other meeting. And that would make. The information presented in rule one parallels for both regular and special meetings. The location. And the anticipated schedule. Recognizing that there's.
So just the first sentence.
So just the first time then. Where the special, yeah, that ends with open meetings act. Special meetings may be held. So I think that could be the, the fourth. You know, quote paragraph in rule one. All meetings mean where then regular, regular exceptions and then the special meetings may be held.
Then what would you change your rule two?
Doesn't need to be first.
Sorry, I apologize. I've not you.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Well, what would, what would we, just to keep some quality of this?
Right.
What, what, what is it in rule two? We've had suggestions about prearranged or. Were made about making sure that no response, you know, was intended under this section. Or shots may not, you know, look on the language, shots may not always be given. And then. Jamie, if I read under non-range, if I read the part about the mayor's objection. Do you think it needs to be moved or can it stay there?
I think as long as you say it out of meaning.
Then it's covered, right?
Yeah, you know, even if there's no non-range participation or whatever, say there's no ID, there's no non-range spacing, just what members of the public should know that, like.
Okay.
What it's worth of word in your character is fine.
Yeah, okay. And then, and then one, I think the suggestion on the last sentence was. Something in the fact that. If you need. What an immediate answer to your question, or if you'd like to directly answer your question, or if somebody says, please, you said, you know? That we're going to put, you know.
Some contact of city. Office, the county city manager.
I just repeated those, I need to try and handle them. Another period. Other suggestions on rule two? Zach?
Well, first I want to check with the part of the chart. There are ever going to be elections on a Monday?
Not as a break now.
In nineteen eighty-six, there were school elections on Mondays.
Yeah, so.
So we should probably strike that from one.
Well, so, so, um. Elections occur on the first Tuesday after the first Monday in certain months. And I. It could be possible that, that there's a. A holiday on the Monday and someone will move trouble for the Tuesday. Which could then be a. An election day, but. It's unlikely in a month that elections occur.
Okay. Well, so to rule two then, um, to two point.
Do you want to strike out or an election day in rule one then?
I, I.
Where?
I, I like the precision and because. Artifacts of nineteen eighty-six are bad habits, but it's never going to happen. Probably. Say. Rule two point one. It says a hard cap of five PM. That's, that doesn't happen. Right? It's great. It helps staff, but it doesn't happen. And so. What this opens up the door to is if we're waiting for something that goes going until Tuesday or Wednesday. Someone can raise objection, why is this in there? We didn't, it wasn't submitted until Wednesday at noon. So. Just submit stuff to manager.
Could we say shall aim to notify? The man, city manager, by.
I'll just, I, what's the objection? What's the?
I, I don't like rules that aren't followed and the hard cap of five PM on Monday before the meeting. And we, we've got emails on Wednesday. We're waiting for material. So. We obviously don't have all the stuff that puts extra stress. Let's just. The clerk or secretary do the stuff as they see fit.
Are you talking about two point one?
Yes.
Then strictly about adding things to the agenda.
By members of representatives.
Yes, but I think that doesn't wipe it down.
Back there.
I would say, when living in history. I would say the majority of the time. Those that want to place something, normally during the, that give the noise by five. And even if they say. Hey, I'm giving you notice without the submit, then come first thing in the morning. It's generally. Generally allow. It's, it's a deadline to give. To give intent, but. What I, what I would like added on is, is that I think that anything submitted. As part of, well, what the type of event is. That if you submit something to be on the agenda. To me, it should go to the item that we now have on the agenda that said composed agenda. Spelled wrong, items for. This should automatically go to P. That's where it goes on the agenda. What we've done for many years is. And I think if you go to P, that's all done right there. It's on this one. That's where I think it should go.
Then how do we sort the things that get on the first go without being on board on as future proposed agenda items? We basically had it three weeks before we consider anything.
Right. So we have a bunch of new business to this meeting. We didn't go on any of the proposed future agenda items.
Right. Well, technically, it's something down there on the proposed agenda. And put it back there. All they do, most approve the agenda and move it up. If there's more people that want to move it up, they can go.
Then we won't have materials or have had time to review it.
Well, no, whatever you submit by five o'clock or thereabouts on Monday would be here under that item. You made a case for your, your, your.
You can also do the other.
It's. Whatever it is that wants to post something beyond the agenda.
Well, that's also the draft agenda is the proposed agenda. Things can go on and come off of it. So essentially recreated or process of adopting an agenda.
Will be over. It's all technically. Till it gets.
Fun fact here, Roberts was aboard much of adopted agenda, if you want to amend it after, you need a supplementary to do that.
You want to strike with actually.
I'm inclined to lean to mine when to do. The way that this rules. And I think if somebody submits by five PM, it goes on under new business, and. The opportunity to, for people to decide they don't want it on, and then be able to. If we want to change it, I think there was a difference in one of the exact iteration. Something like two members of council needed to. They needed to be supported, probably two members of council to submit something. So if what we're trying to do is.
Prevent privilege.
Make it harder, yeah, for one person to just dictate what's happening at a meeting, if they just submit a bunch of stuff, we could add some provision that says two people in each one. The minute. Otherwise, I'm inclined to just let people submit things, and then decide if the approval will be available. Lot of this kind of. Right. And I think proposed agenda is just. We talk at the meeting, we say what we, we want to see on future. I have a quick comment on two two, but I don't overdo them too long.
You go on, Trish.
In the heart of it, if a delay is necessary, the agenda should still be posted online by the end of the day Wednesday. Likely, it seems like there haven't, there have been infrequent delays, I'm just curious to know. If when there have been delays. If that's happened, if that's necessary, uh, I think, do we mean? Five PM Wednesday, do we mean nine PM Wednesday? And we're not sure we're trying to achieve anything with that, perhaps it is removed. Or does it need to be, is it that it can be posted online, or that it should be at least sent to the mayor and council, the draft agenda should be sent to them, you can spell it back if it's not done, but I don't know when that comes together, if what, if the delay is related to the agenda or if it's related. To just give them a packet, put them in finalized, so.
Typically, it is the public. Not the by order.
Right. And when there have been delays, have you been still uploading the agenda to the website?
Um, I, I, I try and, try and get the agenda out if to council, not necessarily posted on site.
Right.
If it kind of go down.
So maybe we just change, and I can say the agenda. Some distributed. To the mayor and council by the end of the day one.
You, you. Then we call the city, we, we. Maybe, maybe you have someone, I just.
Like, like, if, if, if the agenda package is working out, it's our. Okay, I, 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 I. But, yes, mobile, mobiles, I just set out ways to the agenda. Once again. Which maybe later, maybe they not.
I've been linking on our website.
Yeah, I'm gonna give everybody five minutes for the new. City may be, other responses, one was free to. There's been, uh, CEO, speaking of such material. The city may be, we're simply, we're smart, we're open to this from. And by keeping for this act of what others. We've not here tonight. Okay, we have approval of the minutes from our city council meeting on March twenty-fifth, there's a motion to approve events, Mr. Sanro. Last time. Okay, is there a second? My son, true?
A second.
Second, I called that, thank you. Uh, hand it back.
Um, I don't. Think. It says. Just stated a conflict of interest on the context of payroll, I think it should be. Stated employment, the car, and then, and the context of bills, not payroll.
Yeah, and we're allowed to go. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Again.
Six, uh, that brings the top two consideration of line stripping, that it should be line striking. And. Number three for the water tower painting services, it says emotion, provided that only one set of lettering is painted. I think there should be greater detail there. Indicating which side, and I'd have to think back to what that wording was, but to the effect of.
The south side.
South or. Yeah.
Anything else?
Nothing, I think.
What else have we got? Okay, that's, please, go, 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 to the meeting with those changes there.
Well, yes. Griffin?
Yeah.
Alda?
Yeah.
Over?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yes.
Donna Farrell?
Yes.
Ian?
Yes. Motion carriers, thank you, we are down to the jury for this favor, and we have a special proclamation to lead. The same thing. So I'd like to ask all of you to stand that are part of the women's field hockey team. So we offer the city of Dexter proclamation. Whereas the Dexter High School Women's Field Hockey Team. Had an outstanding season, with a thirteen five two overall record. And whereas the team has demonstrated their unwavering commitment. To excellence, superior in their fourth title in school history. By winning the twenty twenty-three Division Two Championship. And whereas the team's exceptional performance throughout the season was a testament to their hard work. Their dedication and their team spirit. Which was led by their four captains, Evelyn Clemons. Emily Kate Covert, Ava Howden, and Marissa Skinner. And whereas the team faced off against their rival Chelsea. In the semifinals, and emerged victorious with a score of two to one, displaying their resilience and unwavering focus. And whereas the team's spilt full execution and unrelenting effort resulted in a well deserved victory in the championship game. Defeating Liggett with a score of two to nothing. Shut up. Now therefore, be resolved, on behalf of the Dexter City Council. We extend our, extend our heartfelt congratulations to the entire Dexter High School Women's Field Hockey Team for your remarkable achievement. This victory not only brings great pride to our community. But also inspires future generations of athletes to strive for greatness. This proclamation is here by deliver on its tenth day of April, and I'd like to hand it to one of the captains. And we'd like to offer our congratulations, can everybody stand and? Now you're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting.
Actually, I was signed, there's not enough space to do.
Thank you, thanks for coming, everyone. Yeah. Stay for the meeting? It's passing. What is going, the show, very interesting this evening. Um. Are you good for John?
I'm sorry.
Oh, no, not this. You're up, you're there.
Name is Sunny Evans. My. And we have been involved in the creek for at least since two thousand and six. And about two thousand and nine, we put some temperature monitors in. And discovered it was a whole water, very supportive. DNR now beginning, uh, putting a, talking with. For every, then, twenty twenty-two, they put in four thousand little guys, six issues. Um, and we've been working on this time on different projects, um, on the creek, which we have a. I think as many of you know, our last few days, we've got an enormous amount of rain, and a lot of flooding, we have, uh, less aquatic vegetation. That we, than we want, we don't have any little boats for fish to eat. Uh, there's a lot of sediment that comes down and gets rough, which means there's little oxygen to the fish, and so we really want to put some time in this year in particular into. This part, this project. So, uh, we hired somebody named Aaron Snell from Streamside. Who's a, a specialist in, um. Instream wood structures. So between. And this is the little tiny set, we did that, the water shed is a hundred and forty square miles, this is that little bit of space between the cemetery and the main street. Bridge, so the cemetery is in the bottom and, um, the main street is up in the top, and as well, it's from the bottom to the top. Um, and all of those little. Little purple things along the river. Structures that, that we propose putting in. Those structures, um. Are twenty feet long, they're all either behind a locust. They're arranged in different ways to do a couple of things. Uh, one is to focus the, um, the stream channel down, more, more centrally down, so that it doesn't come. Spreading out, maybe in the banks, getting shallow, increasing the temperature. Um, so we, we send, send us down the center, if it rolls around, it's more oxygen, create some pools for the fish to hide in, we got a lot of hair on this, we have no color. No. Cover, but no hiding places for these fish. Um, and it also drops sediment on the sides by the banks, so that. At least that, that sediment piles up and stops erosion. Um, so we're going to put these structures in, I, I brought, um. Actually, I, I, I brought some slides, but they won't open on this system, so that's. My back, you know? Um, so here's. And, and, and Aaron Snell's gone all around the state fixing, uh, stream. With this particular kind of project. Uh, you have some of the, 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 in front of you, you know, it's kind of a, 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 a project. All of these are. And he, he goes, forced the wood, the pine and the locust, and bring them in. And we put them in, down by the cemetery, move them around, and. Create structure, starting. Probably down by the bridge. And giving a structure, then we have. Once we get the permit, uh, which is what we need your permission for, we will have five years to do the project entirely. Um, and we weren't, we wait until August, when we have a better vote. And we start with that time, so this is kind of typical, so the, the. Flow and this is coming around about here, smacks against the bank. Um, other cuts over here, see the tree falling in, yeah, close. If this is, it's about. From the water, um, so. Aaron came in and put these simple structures, these wood structures, which will. Which then, yeah, you see, they could be thinking for now, in time, they won't be. So the water comes along through here, smacks against here, drops some sediment, comes through here, rocks in, and rock sediment. And rocks, and he, they reconfigure the, uh, the stream flow down this lane. And this is under things that they didn't bring did. So next slide. This is what happened within about a year. There's now. No under any more on over here. What was some two inches there is what, eight and a half inches now? Um, and this bank will just continue to grow. Um. Instead of continuing to grow. So that, that is our plan, we, we don't want just to. Make life better for, for the trout, because this is really a marginal cold water fishery, it's just that that's. You know, we should do two main things, we, we try to preserve. Cold water fisheries for trout and, and fish trout, and we, um, I read the conversation conservation. He was heavily the conservation. The DNR supports us wholly because, um, they've been putting fish in expecting, um, things to improve, and, and they have been. Uh, but now they're really, particularly in this section, uh, we have lots of support in the DNR, we have support in which continue. Um. Paul Evanoff, who was the main landscape guy, who did the milk park initially, has walked with us and been involved in the planning, and he's in support of it. Um, so that's it, I think, yeah, crushed it.
How many did you say you were going?
Well, I think we've got twelve to thirteen, thirteen is the base, the base, it could be from one log to six logs, depending on the purpose. Of the, um, structure.
And you'd be upstream of the last rock. Main where in the river?
Like in the, I think that little section is not in here. But.
So the last, yeah.
We're not going to disturb what's going on down there now with the, with the rapids.
Okay.
Um, we, we're going to be.
That's a relative restraint section through there.
Uh, but it's got a lot of action, it's got a lot of holes, it's, it's not too big.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm agreeing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay. And actually, everything's going to be upstream of that last rock thing where.
Yeah, the, the road and, and upstream.
Yeah. Do you ever have any powerful log jams or anything in, in areas like this where you build your laws on?
Oh, well, he's put in, um, some, a couple of slides and places, things he put in in twenty ten, and they still are. Today, they are doing what they're supposed to do, and they're just these little. Structures, um, they're, they're all of the assaultable, there are a lot of rivers down, manatee, um. They're, they're doing a good job.
Has there ever been any complaints from canoeers or kayakers?
No, because we, that's been one of our missions all these years is to keep. From Sloan to, um. The, to the ground, we keep that clear for kayak. And we continue to do that, so if, if so, they're all pinned to the bank. Well, if one were to come out, and we know the floods are the floods around here. Our, our job is to go get it and put it back, we don't expect that. Um, and we know, I know that in last year, it performed, some logs came from somewhere, got jammed down here. Down by the train station, and I guess you guys don't get my, you got them out. So, but those were just little exploding logs. Inserted into the bank.
Thank you.
Well. I have a question, I just want to say, I am someone who spends as much time as I can. On the river in my kayak. Um, in as many seasons as I can, so I just wanted to say thank you for. Even in I am things, and for anything for me to help.
Thank you very much.
So, it's been many, many years since I've had my, my waters in our university mission, but. This would essentially stop the natural reentering of the river, right? Virgin, and Grecian. Whittles and the oxbows.
Well, we would like that. Yeah, it would make it possible for the river to. But we don't expect what we're doing in the medication to have. It took about that kind of. But it's going to work with it. In terms of erosion. Um. Um, but you're not going to see them, it's not going to check, change the flow, it's not going to change temperature, well, you're complicated. Create more holes for fish, but we'll have.
Or if you're, you're adding base in areas where it's normally undercut, it's going to stop the natural process of it, one, two, and there with the higher current, and the backside of the channel, right?
Well, here, um. The, the coming down. Downstream, and it, here's the, like, bigger again, and, um, this, uh. This is, I, I, this is all ready to spread out, and there is actually a small fracture there, which I think all of it. And, and it's doing its job of, of bringing that current this way, rather than letting it spread out. And, and dropping sediment here, and somebody putting these rocks here, but it comes out here and hangs against this time. Now, the, the virtue of, of this is to keep it from doing that. To keep it going this way, you can see this erosion up here, this isn't, you know. Something that you want to. something that you want to continue, you don't want it to keep eroding like that. Um it just water is this, it's not creating habitat that needs to be versioned. Um so if you put these structures in, it'll stop that erosion. I got in that one uh slide. Are you are you saying that you think that that's going to, that that keeping this from eroding is going to make a change and a negative change in the boat?
No, so I I work in in uh floodplain management, it's very, I work quite fun with people who do absolutely everything and stuff. What they do, um just trying to understand the dynamics here. Is is most of the sediment that's probably coming from agricultural fields?
Nobody knows for sure, there's a lot of agricultural sediment. Um there is a lot, but nobody can say for sure that's where it's coming from. One of our projects, we're hoping to develop with N G R I is a sensor search, to see where all this sediment really is coming from. And uh like their hotspots, but that's kind of been sort of gathered and put in sections and it just swirls and it creates its own sort of dynamic mass, and we want to find the hotspots. And then, but I don't know what we do with them, but I'm not a scientist, I don't know where we go from there, but we're looking through that sort of problem. But if you go down here at the end, they'll create deposits on a side of that, at the here on it. Um so that if you were going to walk down there, you'd have to be a little worried about all the hook. And the deep temperatures, we put a monitor down into that hook, this summer, it never changed, it stayed about eighty the whole time. Whereas we're having these really nice variations in temperature that support all of the back of our rivers and the fishing. The plans, um in other sections of the creek.
Um that's going to be a huge question is, because of the channelization, the higher speeds is likely to have more more sediment in the current, right there.
Okay, I don't know, it's not, it's not my.
Okay.
I can't answer that. Everybody, you know, they probably have some problem, what we're doing with the, how how much work with floodplain objects. Um if you're just in, they hope they ask, it would be wonderful.
It's been a while since I've had a fantasy. I'm good, Andrew.
Do you have any additional questions? Thank you for your presentation, sir.
Thank you for listening.
You're welcome. Our third very important patient this evening is interview Baker Tilly.
Hey, everybody.
Thank you.
Um you guys have a packet, right? Does anybody want a paper copy? I brought it in case. Well, all right, so um my name's Andy Campbell with Baker Tilly. Formerly unlogged, uh my mentor Tom Tracy and I have worked with the city for a long number of years, so um kind of taken over for him now, he is now retired. So he worked on the rate study with the city previously in twenty nineteen. And this is just a regular update of both sewer and water. Uh tonight, we're just going to kind of go through some of the major points that we're looking at in terms of how to to plan for the next few years of rates. What we're seeing on the funds, uh kind of talk first some things that we're also seeing uh outside of just user rates in terms of planning and inflation and all that stuff about dealing with water and sewer. So if we can be possible to share it. We can start with water, that would be great, otherwise. Well, he's getting that up there, I'll uh preface this a little bit, so one of the things that we've talked about internally with working with mostly Justin Murray on this is um the fact that we are trying to plan for the next few years of not issuing more debt on the funds. So one of the key pieces that we're trying to do in, we're progressing the capital improvements. So um is trying to pay for those capital improvements with cash and make sure that the the fund is in a good position, both keeping up with inflationary costs on the expense side, pay for capital improvements with cash and not add more debt. Um it was talked about a lot in terms of especially on the sewer side. So uh sewers first, so we'll bring up sewer here. Uh the other thing I do want to kind of preface this is that we had talked internally that there is a lot of grant money going around to communities in the state of Michigan, especially through what's called the State Revolving Fund. Uh the State Revolving Fund deals with water and sewer projects statewide. When we were talking about this, one of the things that we kind of have to plan for as this city is that realistically, the city is not going to be eligible for those grant funds. Um you may be able to get a very small portion if you issue debt, uh but the the reality is is that the communities that are getting most of the grant funding have a median household income that is below the state of Michigan, which is roughly sixty three thousand. The city of Dexter is at eighty six thousand three thirteen, which essentially means that you cannot qualify for the grants. Uh so that is something we took into account too, because not only do we want to make sure realistically, we're trying to, even though we are your bond advisors, kind of playing against each other, but we tend to make sure you avoid debt as much as possible when you're on a utility fund, funding water or sewer. Uh we also have to keep in mind the fact that it's not going to be advantageous for you to really go issue debt and go to the revolving fund because it's going to be almost all loan if you can access their funds. So uh I did want to kind of preface that as well, so that you know that we have researched everything in terms of trying to access grant money for the capital improvements, what are the options out there? Uh unfortunately, right now, the uh where this essentially comes from is the federal administration is targeting those grant funds for um communities with lower median household incomes. So with that, we'll get into where we stand on the sewer side. Uh if you're a call, if you're here, not sure who was at the time, but in two thousand nineteen, we were recommending seven percent increases on sewer. And then it was going to go down um hopefully as things stabilized. So there's a little bit of a change on that for this analysis, but that's kind of where we were at previously, and then we'll talk about where we stand today. Uh do you want to, I mean, I go through like some of the highlighted numbers that are important in terms of what we see on the financial side. The first number that you'll see on the top there is the cash balance as of the last fiscal year end, five hundred and twenty eight thousand and change. You can see the trending over time. Uh one thing to keep in mind, the sewer side is heavily skewed in the trending because that had your bond money in there. So it's not really like for like to say, oh, we This is a, perhaps mention, this is a compilation of your audience, by the way. Page two shows the uh operating revenues, expenses. When you look at the history, so again, the the top numbers that are in yellow there, uh this is essentially due to the fact that you've been steadily raising rates over time, so you're putting the the fund in a better position financially on the revenue side. Uh the one thing on the flip side of that is that, and why you'll see what our recommendation is um shortly here, is that the expensive expensive has risen as well. So the expenses are higher uh due to obviously some inflation pressures and uh this overall expensive increases that were planned. So we are anticipating, like, obviously raising rates, but we are not getting the full positive impact of that because expenses are also eating into that. Pages three and four are your budget compilation, so it shows the last couple of years of actual data from twenty one, twenty two fiscal year ends and the twenty twenty three budget. Uh if you go to the bottom of page four, that is the kind of where things stand in terms of whatever their total operating expenses without debt, without capital, just baseline operating. So that number is due for us to kind of see if you didn't have the debt and you didn't do anything on the capital side, we have to bring in in twenty twenty three, eight hundred and thirty one thousand dollars to operate the sewer fund. On a normal year, uh there's a couple of things changing on the operating side, we are targeting nine hundred and four thousand on a normal year to operate the sewer fund. So again, no, not not taking into account capital, not taking into account debt, that's going to come into play here in a second. But we need to bring in nine hundred thousand just to operate the system effectively. And then obviously, as I talked about, inflation and everything over time is going to uh raise that number, but that's kind of where we're starting from. Page five is kind of layering in that next set of data points, which is the debt. This was talked about extensively, obviously, on the sewer side. Uh the pressures on the sewer fund are like significantly related to the debt. Um just in terms of ballpark numbers, I mean, you can kind of think of it as we we need to bring in nine hundred thousand dollars to operate the system. We have eight hundred and sixty thousand dollars we need to bring in for the debt. You're relatively, it's almost fifty fifty right now. The debt is a significant portion of the budget. Uh it is going to be that same amount for the next seven years until we see some pressure and that's what you'll see, the the two drop offs that I highlighted in yellow and orange uh in terms of some of those debts being paid off in eight years and then so eleven years from now. So we still have some time to go on the sewer fund debt. Uh we are trying to target no issuance of debt in the next five years, that's obviously subject to capital improvement costs coming in on target and not having anything bad happen. Uh but we did try to target everything cash funded for the immediate future and try not to add to that debt. Um we will see hopefully some um some relief in terms of the debt payments in about eight years. With that in mind, we're going to get to the cash flow. If you have any questions, you don't need to wait till the end, obviously. Um feel free to stop me, but.
And most of those uh debt, most of that debt services are callable, changeable easily, right?
Correct. Uh the two thousand twelve bonds, I mean, these are all at really good interest rates. There's not going to be a chance that you can refinance. Um other, maybe the, there's one of them that we're targeting, we're targeting. Yeah, I don't think there's.
But now it's that that should stay on.
Yeah, but that's what I thought. So the two thousand nine and two thousand twelve bonds, pretty much they are what they are until you there will be an option to to pay them off early. Um it's going to be depending on a lot of factors. We always, it it sounds great, it will help you with those discussions if it comes to that. But you do want to be very careful about really promising that, because it's not the same as paying off your mortgage early because you have competing monies that you need to be careful about driving yourself into further debt at higher interest rates if you pay off too much too quickly and lose your cash. But uh the two thousand eighteen bonds, there is going to be an option in in relative around twenty twenty eight to possibly refinance those. But that's going to be a very um it's going to be a very big question about whether or not that happens. I mean, based on interest rates today, it wouldn't happen. So you really have to kind of assume this is what it is and um we're going to pay them off as they come due and make our payments on time. But that's probably going to be what it is, so. Uh on the sewer fund, so page six of the cash flow. Just as a reminder, like we talked about, we've been kind of doing seven percent on sewer the past couple of years. Uh we are recommending that you you keep that for the next five years. So again, the biggest thing that we're seeing um from the city of Dexter Sewer Fund, and then obviously we work with a bunch of other communities, is the potential that capital improvements don't come on budget, inflation doesn't stop. And that's going to put a big pressure on whether or not you can maintain everything in in terms of paying up all these capital improvements with cash. And then uh not getting into further debt. So we are recommending that you you keep on that same plan, and that will help uh basically do what we talked about, try not, try to avoid more debt, try to keep things on an even level keel for the rate pairs and fund the system properly. Uh I'm actually going to go to the very bottom to start, I do want to make sure that you can see in those green numbers at the very bottom. With this plan, with the estimated capital improvements, with all the the operating expenses we've been talking about, the debt that we've been talking about, we are not going to save a bunch of money for a rainy day. This is essentially making sure that we have enough money to operate the the system, pay our debt. Uh do the capital improvements that we have targeted over the next five years, and the cash balance stays relatively is the same, goes up a tiny bit, but not too much. It does go down in the next couple of years, uh you'll see that it goes down a couple hundred thousand for the next fiscal years as we do see capital. And that kind of starts to recover thereafter. We always target a typical homeowner bill. Um everybody's different, there's going to be people that use more water and thus charge for sewer the same, uh or they use less. So it it, you can't all just say like this is what everybody's going to be charged, but uh a metric that is used statewide is for you for you guys who build bi-monthly, so if you use nine thousand gallons over two months. So this is a two-month bill, keep in mind, uh is that blue box in the very center. If you look at your current customer, for in this, this is just the sewer portion of the bill. One or a second, but just the sewer portion of the bill, that that customer currently pays my hundred forty two dollars and thirty eight cents over two months. So approximately seventy one dollars a month. This increase, if you move forward with this, uh would increase their bill ten dollars, which would be five dollars per month. And then it is recommended to stay the course on that yearly over the next few years. The major break, the major pinch points uh is the capital improvement. So essentially, we're in a good position, funding wise right now. We, you can see at the very bottom, this like kind of really light blue tealish box in the very bottom. You're bringing enough money to to operate the system to pay your debts. What's going to be kind of stacking up in the next few years is trying to afford some capital permits and trying to pay for those in cash without draining the fund too quickly. So that's the reason for staying the course in the rates and making sure that hopefully everybody can see that in our normal track and keep everything.
I noticed that you kept the customer account same across the top, which I'm sure you're doing the math somehow. Is that, can we plan that as something?
Yep, so. Yep, good point. So what we do in our first draft to the calendar is we assume, how does it look with uh your current customer base? So there is the assumption of a slight increase, you can see where there's twenty one customers added from this this curve this year to the next one. So when we talked in the working group, and this was our direction, uh this was our recommendation, obviously, we happy to hear other opinions on this, but essentially, we take into account what is known today, what is coming online, you absolutely know that they're going to come online, and that's the twenty one customers. When we look at what's going to happen in the future, this was essentially a big change from my predecessor and and building out rates in the past, was that there were many communities that got bitten the butt on this when they assumed very large growth, and then the recession came and everything stopped. And they held up on rates on the assumption that their systems would grow. And then essentially, when the developers stopped everything, they had to do big rate increases on everybody because they weren't bringing enough money to operate their the current system. So we highly recommend, we take into account what is one hundred percent known today, and then we take into account future growth on future rates. So how that could look is like if you add a subdivision of a hundred homes or something in the future, what that would do is hopefully, if everything lines up, obviously, if you qualify it, but uh instead of seven percent, you might be able to lower it to lower it to five percent or something thereafter. So once those customers start coming in the line, you start to realize more revenue, you're also going to add more expense, so it's not all free for money, so you have to be careful about that. But if those like things line up where you have a significant amount of growth and you start to see more revenue, that would lower the inflationary increases for everybody thereafter. So.
Thank you.
I think we're in the main place. But um we'll, 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 but I I think one thing that um, you know, we would be talking before is that, you know, this is uh essentially a living document, so while, you know, we're projecting. We're projecting, you know, no increases, you know, breathe any any work work on this. Um, that would then read it back and. Uh, we'll see updated every year to give projections on um, what will be our revenue allowance, so.
So what's the miscellaneous revenue?
That would be, um, so it is, that includes your connection charges this year.
Okay.
Going forward, because again, we're not including new customers going forward, that's gonna be like your investments and penalties. A small amount for investment returns on your sewer balances and then any penalties for delinquent payments. Water, alright.
Just one up, so the billable flow, is that based on the actual or is that based off of a patient?
That is based on actual. Now. I'm glad that you bring it up, because I forgot about that. We. We are keeping an eye on the billable flow because um. It's even when you add customers, a lot of times you will not see a lot of growth in the billable flow. There's been a trend in the state of Michigan, especially that there's been a big push for water conservation. There's, it's good and bad, right? But essentially, when you talk about finances. And again, I stress that there is many reasons why conservation is good, but when you talk about finances. Conservation hurts you around the revenue side, so you have to be careful about, if you start to lose billable flow. You actually have to increase rates essentially because you're not getting enough money to operate the fund. We are being very conservative on that billable flow assumption, and we're trying to keep that level on the assumption saying that even if we add a couple of customers, we hope that it's gonna level. For the next five years that um. It's gonna be, I mean, it it that is the hardest, I will say, from our perspective, that's the hardest number to pinpoint because. You're gonna have years that are dry years, which effective that people use more water. Wet years, people use less water, you have conservation, you have new customers. We try to make sure that that assumption, so the hundred and six, three forty-three, which is essentially. A hundred and six million gallons, it's a thousand units. Um. That is hopefully conservative, but not too conservative where you're gonna nece- unnecessarily. Raise your rates against it, so.
And as folks installing local toilets and as we have folks coming out with second meters. Um, folks are are using a sprinkler at their house to do their upper wiring, um, all those things affect. What actually goes down the sewer, um, and thus impacts revenues.
Alright, water. Uh, so I kind of go through these same kind of data points to talk about. The water side is actually in pretty darn good shape. Uh, you can see that the cash has been growing steadily over the past couple of years. Uh, actually, you know, fly through this for the first couple of pages here, but page two. We are doing slight increases on the water side, uh, so the revenues have gone up over time. Uh, we had a little bit of a blip in twenty twenty-two, but it is projected to go up slightly with. Um, increases, but this is kind of where you start to see the competition of. Slight rate increases versus potentially what was twenty-one, twenty-two was a more wet year, so you didn't have as much water sales, so. Even though you raised rates three percent, your charges for services actually went down. So. This is where the competition kind of looks at of how do we manage the fund over time? We're not gonna look at this and just say. We lost twelve thousand dollars year over year, let's jack up rates, but we we wanna take a long-term approach to say. That's fine, we had a, we had a little bit of a down year in terms of sales, but we're still on track overall, and this is how we're gonna proceed going forward. Uh, pages three and four show budget detail and bottom page four is again the key point. Uh, your budget for twenty twenty-three is six hundred and sixty-five thousand. Again, that's just your operating expenses. Um, not including debt or capital. And going forward, there's a, there's a couple of one-time things in there, but going forward, we're projecting. Six hundred and forty-seven thousand three hundred as the base for normal operations on the water fund. Page five is your debt, same type of thing. Um, not expecting to to do any refinancings or payoff early at this point. Uh, those payments are roughly two hundred and fifty-five thousand a year for the next eight years. And then it drops off in year nine and then going in year ten. Uh, water fund is a little bit less debt, incident a little bit better position cash flow wise, I think. I believe everybody kind of sees that the rates lower, everything's kind of a little bit. Uh, more stable on the water side right now. If you go to page six. Uh. And then concentrate on the blue numbers first here, so typical homeowner bill on the water side. You actually have very, very low rates. Um, on the sewer side, the rates are proportionally higher comparatively across the state of Michigan. The water side, you have proportionally much lower rates than the average in the state of Michigan. Uh, when you look at the total bill. So water, I I always equate things to monthly, it's easier for me, but uh, twenty dollars on water. Kind of remember what was the uh. Sewer amount. One forty-two, seventy-one, so ninety-nine. You are going to be like just above the median, so. Uh, a medium bill for the state of Michigan. For a sewer combined is about ninety to ninety-five dollars. You're at ninety-nine. So obviously, we're we're gonna increase that slightly with inflationary increases in the next couple of years. I do anticipate. There's a lot of communities in your spots. There's actually a lot of communities, a lot of communities that we work with that are addressing. Way back dated capital needs. So that is going to eventually go up over time as letting capital problems come into play with. Uh, water quality issues. Backdated capital that communities have addressed for decades, so you guys are in right in the median. Category um, in terms of a total bill. And from what we can see in terms of capital, you're actually addressing practically looking at maintaining and updating your system. So I would say you're you're in a pretty darn good spot personally, when we see this on the financial side to say that. You're charging people a reasonable rate. And you're actually not just charging people lower rates, so you can just say you're charged lower rates, you're actually doing capital improvements as they're needed. And maintaining the systems effectively. So I think that's a good sell point when you talk about. What happens in terms of going forward and how to communicate that to rate pairs. Uh, I I fully agree that. Sewer has some pressure points, and a lot of that is because of the debt that we're trying to address over the next few years and making sure that we don't add to it. But again, the water side, the water weights, the water rates are phenomenally low, uh, so right now they're uh, just over twenty-eight dollars a month. And looking to go to around thirty dollars a month. So this one, on the water side, it's only a couple bucks that we're talking about. It's it's really trying to. Make sure that we maintain it, the momentum going forward on water, and we don't just cut it off and and really regret five, ten years from now that. We didn't do anything. So on the water side, it's more, again, momentum, we're trying to address capital needs in terms of water mains. In the capital improvement plan, some service line work, water tower we have. Make sure again that we're doing that with cash, we're not checking, we're, over the next five years, we're projecting that we are not gonna add debt to the water fund. Uh, so making sure that we pay our operations, pay our debt, pay the capital with cash and do things in the right direction for the water. Last thing on there is the green box. I do wanna, again, I just point out like. Those increases, so we're, we are recommending five percent per year on water, which again is. Uh, two dollars and eighty cents for the bill, so it's about, call it a buck fifty a month. Uh. We are not trying to save millions of dollars, it's really just trying to maintain all that and pay for all that. Uh, the cash goes from five hundred and thirty-six currently to six eighty-one in five years, if all those assumptions play out. Uh, so again, just trying to make sure that we're responsible with the rate pair's money and make sure that we pay for it, so.
Questions, Andy, what's the difference between the higher water customer count than the sewer?
So you have um, a few customers that are on sewer only, and then there's irrigation customer. But there is, you have a, you have some customers that are sewer only.
So the the water customer count is higher than sewer.
Oh, sorry, other way around, I bet. You have water only customers. If I listen to you correctly, uh, no, you you have some customers around September. Okay, so um, there, we are, you can see that there, we do break it out, um. There's irrigation, so you do offer irrigation meters, so. You do allow customers, the biggest thing on the sewer side of if. Uh, as Justin said, you're gonna have people that want to water the lawns a lot, and it's gonna be important to them that they don't get charged the sewer for that water use. Because one of them on, it's not gonna be on sewer, you do offer irrigation meters. Uh, there's a select few customers that are not on public water and sewer, so. Very limited, though.
What was an example of somebody that has a second field?
But then, then, those are very.
I I didn't know where the thirty-one are. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
Oh, no, not at all, no. Uh, I just, other questions?
So you're recommending for, if you see the next fiscal year, seven percent on sewer, five percent on.
Correct, and then. No action tonight, just kind of informational for this purpose, but then this is gonna be taken into a different cycle. And hopefully adopted with your twenty-three, twenty-four weather.
Thank you very much, Mr. Moore. Okay, that includes our prior participation, more than our name participation. Notary participation is a part of the agenda that the, for anybody in the audience that wishes to speak. Um, at my discretion, I I may call on members of the audience at any time if there is anything. Um, does anybody wish to speak this evening? The, is there anyone online that would like to speak to me on a notary? Please use the raise hand feature if you would please. Okay, what directly expect that there's no notary in spaces either? Do we have any declaration of confidence of interest? We're now ready to prove the agenda.
I need to approve the agenda with one change, um, flipping the order of M one and M two. Um, I feel it might be. To before we go into one.
A discussion you, that.
I have a question, uh, item K four on the agenda.
You're about to move it off of the center there? Okay, so, okay, four will become. The other.
Uh, swap, yes, some fair, yeah, all day.
Yeah.
Upper. Griffin?
Yes.
The shells. You.
Uh, yes. If you're curious, we have one public hearing this evening. Uh, related to the ordinance leasing property located in eighty-fifth Main Street, the Hotel Hickman, for a period of two years. So I'm gonna open the public hearing at seven fifty. Especially, is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on? The proposed ordinance, lease property located in eighty-fifth Main Street, hotel, for a period of two years. Anyone online? That's here to speak to the public here. Not seeing any here, that, don't have anything to. Okay, so we'll record, we'll stop, no comment. The public hearing, so we'll close the public hearing at seven fifty-one. There is a proposal consideration, yeah. It follows if there's a council member, Joe. Moving. With the ordinance listed for the. Uh, leasing of the property located in eighty-fifth Main Street Hotel, for a period of two years. Okay, wish you best, Senator. Second, I'll have, thank you both. Discussion for questions.
Zach. Uh, question for for staff in the ordinance. It says, uh, due to the situation, this hereby lease property located in eighty fifty, eighty fifty Main to Hotel Hickman. Is that DVA or the LLC? I cannot find an LLC that's just Hotel Hickman.
So, I mean, we talked about previously, um, removing the name associated with Hotel Hickman. And leaving it at, at the in business that.
But Hotel Hickman isn't a legal entity, a DBA is not a legal entity that you're gonna enter a contract with, has to be an LLC of person. Or or incorporated entity. The, the Hotel Hickman Wild West Adventures on page twenty-seven. Was an LLC, it had been converted to an incorporation. So it it ought to be consistent. And my follow-up question would be. Is it supposed to be at the LLC or the incorporation? Have we received proof that? The applicant has control of whatever entity that is. Next things I would point out on page twenty-seven, three, the term. Uh, I will question if the term can begin today when the ordinance doesn't become effective until it's been published. So that should probably be changed to whatever that date was. For the rent. This seems like it kind of got out of whack, uh, because there's a previous one and a new one. The. Rent, I don't believe is intended to go up until a year has expired, so it'll be April. Whatever.
So I was, that I was trying to keep up the calendar. As the, as the previous news was.
Then perhaps the the ordinance ought to be later in the first calendar year. If you, when you say year one, that's usually from the start of the term to the finish of the first year. That's all.
Okay, so. If we're not sure we have the right name, we want those formers.
Yeah, some additional. No, that's fine. I would agree that we should postpone it, so we have different language, uh. I think my comments are related to the actual amount. That we're leasing the property for, and I think this came up in the past. But I don't show, we first started this lease in twenty twelve at a rate of six hundred and twenty-five dollars a month. So by the time you get to seven hundred and twenty-five dollars, eleven years later, that's only a sixteen percent increase. If you plug in six hundred and twenty-five dollars into the Consumer Price Index, six hundred and twenty-five dollars in twenty twelve, it's to eight hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy-two cents. In today's dollars, or as that category from brief. In September of twenty-two, we received a market rate assessment from Jeff Evans. Indicating that the property, there was a range in, uh, you know, dollars per square foot. If you took the average of what the market, it wasn't September, it was nine hundred and twelve dollars a month. Uh. I guess I struggle with the principle of subsidizing any or even all businesses. Later on in our packet, there is an item talking about. Allocating state funds related to. Allocating state funds related to how well-funded different municipalities pension funds are. And in that. Uh, there's a proposed resolution that basically says, with all municipalities are experiencing these same pension-related financial stresses. And we should be penalized for having a well-funded pension fund. So I think in that same vein, um. You know, all residents' property taxes just went up five percent, all residents are experiencing. The same financial stresses, um. As any business or as any other resident in town, so I disagree with the city's position of subsidizing this business owner, and I guess. I would propose minimally the rate of eight hundred sixteen dollars and seventy two cents a month, because that's. At least not losing any money to inflation since twenty twelve. I would just assuming see the average of the market rate, uh, which is nine hundred twelve dollars a month. Again.
Major.
I did find the owner's name is Melissa McClure. Um, and she does have an association that have been registered for the state of Michigan, it's, um, Chappell, I don't know, LLC.
Justin, has she seen this?
Uh, she, wow, I haven't had her, um, some of times on, honestly, I haven't gotten the response, but.
Okay, I think I'd like to still make sure we have the right, thanks for looking that up, Michelle. What's in there? Other talks, full time for testing. Okay, is there someone who would like to push it along?
Oh, exactly. I'm just curious how much time staff has to spend maintaining this building. I don't need an answer now, but I know it sits really close to the ground and would does not like to be close to the ground.
So, um, D W was just out last week, um, on the roof, um, tarring and attaching the roof. Because, uh, we have reports for me to.
Like I've said before, I think we we ought to get out of ownership of this building, it doesn't feel good for us to be. Competing with private landlords. If there's concern about the historic nature of the structure, we can put clauses in there, deep restrictions, rights for first refusal. Um, to protect the structure, or if something happens to the site, we can have opportunity to purchase it. Or get the building. I know.
Yes, one.
I'd just like to say that I've said in the past that we can. Make things into a lease to be tenant responsible for more maintenance, as typical of a release that's done. So I would receive that, though, before I just jump to some.
So they they are applicable for internal building improvements.
Fine, you can, whatever you want to put into, we can put whatever we want into a lease.
So. Uh, we'll move to the postponer to. Check in the public state and, uh. Requirement to always have posted changes in the first year code. For the lease note and your update needed by the company. And until the next week. Our second. Seven nine. The most that I've heard, seven, I think, yeah. Thank you all, so we'll go, just look before you. Check out the publication data.
Yeah, publication date to start, yeah, change to the first year, or the annual totals on the on the rent.
Yeah.
And the, uh. Update is needed on the name of the company.
And then to the last, okay. Thank you.
For, uh, sorry, uh, just depends, is that right? For for the the amounts for the, right, he he giving the same amount also as are in here.
Yeah.
Just just changing it to 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 calendar year.
Well, no, it says the lease shall refer monthly payments totally eight hundred dollars a year and one, so, I mean, if that's what it is.
Okay.
But it's gonna change down here, one or something like that. The total. The other thing is that the. The in the ordinance, it says Hotel Hickman. And then, but then in the lease, we had the other name, Hotel Hickman Wild West Adventures, and then showing us differently. I I don't know if those need to be the same, different, I mean, I could see where we would have ordinance that would say it's leased to the business. And that the lease may be subject to the. Corporate entity or something, I don't know, or goals and probably we'll get we'll we'll get it back.
Yep, thank you. The comments on the motion of the fall.
So I have a comment on, um, the rent.
Sure.
Um. I understand that the rent for this business might not have gone up in. What other averages that happen and such. There are a couple things on that for me. This business is. A very popular business in Dexter. Higher rent usually, if the business needs to be successful in what they're doing. Means higher prices for for consumers, so it kind of translates on the other side. To higher prices for people in the city. And also, there are people that actually come, and I have to run, that come to the city of Dexter to go through Hotel Hickman, and a lot of times that also translates to. Them spending. In other businesses in town, so. It's not just this by itself, and, um, the higher rents usually mean higher prices for consumers. And if that impacts others coming that is spending in other areas of town, that can also be impacted. Um, so that's just. The thought on that.
Okay. Unless, you know, unless there's more people that want to focus specific amount of justice, goes back and tend to trust. But. Negotiated, if we have a five into this. Then I can make me make sure we have the. You know. And you've been there for a couple of classes, so many people, you know.
And and we'll go back over in person, I gave her the the old. Copy of the lease when she came in with style when her first body now. Changing hands. Uh, this is for us by, I give her a copy of the. Police, um, at that time.
Your procedural question, does Robert's rules allow, uh, motion to amend, uh, motion to postpone? This come up before?
I think you take a motion to postpone, yeah.
I want to make a motion to amend the motion to postpone to include all provisions mentioned by Joe, uh. To increase the annual rate to ten thousand nine hundred forty four dollars in the years.
For reason number?
Ten thousand nine hundred forty four dollars, which would equate to nine hundred twelve dollars a month.
To pay their second.
Also, I'm pretty strong here, man.
There's a motion to amend, including providing direction, adjustment. On the amount of the lease to be nine hundred dollars a month, which is ten thousand nine forty four annually, so the two that I'll check out. Sent in by. That. Thank you, James, and the best. Okay, a conversation or session on the amendment?
I can appreciate that. Businesses bring in additional revenue to the community. What I can't swear is that because this particular business is in a building that the city owns, we are going to offer them a subsidy on their rent. Um. If we're gonna do it for one business, we should do it for all. If we're gonna do it for all businesses that the cost of all residents were experiencing the same, you know, financial hardships, then I think we do it for no businesses. In the absence of specific. Quantitative data about the additional revenue brought to the city because of this one particular business versus other businesses in the same. Industry, I just cannot. I cannot support subsidizing one business because they happen to be in the building that was not. Thank you.
Thank you. So.
Did we have a motion on version seven, this, about what the rent is gonna be? And have the same question?
The 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 rent has always been included in the ordinance on. Every, every, everybody I've made ordinance, the rightful amounts are.
Well, we might talk about it, it was a bit previous over. Right, gotcha, okay.
Well, so 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 when 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 he adopted. The initial ordinance. Some months ago.
Yeah. It was the previous.
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
And then. And for updating ordinance.
Okay, so Justin, please call the vote on the amendment, convention, motion, vote on.
Look at that real quick. Uh, Michelle?
Yes.
Some fair, no. All day?
No.
Griffin?
Yes.
Over?
No.
Block?
No.
You.
No. No, okay, so the motion. We will fail to amend, so was that the original motion, the first element of the report conditions? On the bill. For this back. Jason, Justin, please call the vote on the motion to postpone.
Some fair, yes. Upper?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
All day?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yep.
Good ones, yeah. You.
Yes. And so that motion carries, but I would do, I would do it, right? Well, do you want to over there? Sorry, Zach, sorry. Hey, okay. Okay, we are on to communications, we're going to communicate with Beckett, the meeting calendar. And, um. If you're looking at the next one, related to the drivers. Application. Or their. Times on the communications. That.
Cap dark did kind of meet, uh, the past Thursday, it was Western Washington Housing Initiative, spearheaded by Chelsea, um, lots of overlap. Uh, so we didn't meet, we didn't disappear, we just kind of. We're part of the partner.
Yeah, I was just gonna say, because this is a communication, is there any reason to include either of the fireworks state in like a. Email update around that time, I don't know what, if that helps with that category.
Yeah, so so we do usually, um, send out an email, um, outlining, um, the city's ordinance on fireworks and like visible dates. Um. Because these are outside of the city, um, I know when normally. Blast them out.
That was my ask, where is sixty six twenty, that's gonna be on there?
Uh, it's 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 just outside the city, I I'm not sure I remember too.
To reach, but which?
Yeah.
Okay, the comments on the meeting. We are down to our first report this evening, from the public services superintendent, welcome Tim.
Hi, I'll leave you alone.
Yeah, okay.
So obviously, there's two weeks before before any guys. We have any questions, I got four things here, I think.
Um, I don't know if there's questions or much, but. As a. Person on the western drive or the west ridge. It's why, everybody, I'm not thrilled with how the tree training is going. Um. I don't think that they do want to cover my whole tree, the same one. Um. Actually, you know, the goal of tree training, but I think I understand some of the goals I have for tree training. They don't necessarily, they think they. Share the same goals, um, there are branches that. You walk around, they're, you know, growing down. It seemed like obvious things to snip off now, but they're not going to do it down. I don't see that occurring. For the health of the tree. And there are trees that are actually bushes. That we allow to just maintain, that. A bush, which seems odd to me.
It's on the base of it.
Yeah. Um. They appear to use a chainsaw as their only. Method. Several of the much smaller branches. Afraid as a result of it, it's not clean cut. Um. And then. Many of the branches that were taken off were never ever gonna hit a truck or a vehicle.
So.
Now, these are, I realize I can't go back and. Showing this, because they're all gone.
No, I I understand that.
Maybe I should have asked him before, I just wanted to know that. I don't know where the direction came from. Or what we're following, but the letter that we got didn't have. I guess we, I don't think we did a good job of setting the expectation of what we're looking for, yeah. Because there are always, there's, I personally have treated those trees since they were little, they were to keep them off the side, off, keep them off cars that I'm on the side of this street. Hard part, I mean, it was a long time, my vehicles that I was keeping with friends from Indian Palace. Um, development, we've done most of the time. And at the end of the walk around, I'm sure you're looking at, I don't know much more they have to do, I don't know where they are in the whole process.
They don't take a look.
But they they took off, they took off. Couple, three inch diameter, that was, well, they'll create one of my house. That are. Pretty high. They're actually, they're heading, I don't know, you know, how long it takes for them to get, it's done. To put the rash.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to express, I'm not, I'm not thrilled about it. I realize there's two different sets of trees that are out there. There's the pear trees, there's a lot of pear trees. That are, you know, they're fast growing and are. Out of control in a lot of places, there's some places on some of those where there's an obvious slip. That they didn't address at all, that I would have thought from a safety perspective, they would take it or. Send the trees down, or even more follow.
Why, I can go over, like I said, I can go drive through there tomorrow, see what's, you know, I went through initially, anything was, uh, too old, the. The village has a tree specification manual through the tree board, and you're familiar with that, and I think that's what they're going off of. Um, it talks about the clearance in sidewalks being minimum seven feet, street clearance of fourteen feet. Um, we've had problems in, now a year, some of the mother people saw them doing where it's a safety issue, wouldn't, not only. UPS guy came over when I was when Danny's here, you know, complaining about, you know, the the trees being out there to part of the road. But I don't know how many times these guys have replaced, uh, our VPW has replaced, uh, meters and stuff coming in there. We had the the two people that we just hired at very, okay, and they get these bigger trucks and they're gonna blow them down, they're very timid, I was saying, they were no. You wanna get as close as you can, you know, to to the curb, when you have trees out there, it's intimidating, especially when you're in the middle, and I know this, when you're looking at everything else. Um, I will be happy, definitely take a look tomorrow. And, uh, see, I, me personally, I do things a little different when I would true, I'm not your training anymore, but when I would turn trees in previous, you know, ones. You know, I always did it, so it would probably be a good twelfth in the air, but that tree would start to blossom up and get up to the top, and it would be symmetrical looking, so, um. The little bit I saw the other day, I didn't see. Exactly what you were saying, but I can go in there and look a little better and see, see if it become something different, maybe a little bit to change, but. Yeah. It, like I said, a safety issue, in my opinion, that's the biggest thing, and I know trees are a tough situation with anybody, not just you, anybody. You know, a lot of people have different things, some people say come to the ground, get ready, repairs, a lot of people don't believe that too, so I think, uh, terminal one thing you turned up, you're not, you'll be so they need that. So, but I would definitely, as I said, I'll go out there tomorrow.
What company is doing that?
It's a firm, it's. It's, uh, permits.
From.
Uh, it's formerly our, our work here.
And have they, have they been doing this for a long time for the cities?
So they, they, they started, we, we started on the annual pre-program last year, and they did, that's what's again, here I go.
And prior to that, who was doing it?
Well, we, we, we didn't have an organized pre-trimming program.
Right, but if things needed to be trimmed, was that, it was just not happening?
It was, it was, well, it was, it was based on calls.
Yeah.
Oh, okay. All right.
And so, so it was, it was the DPW running out, or, you know, if there's a tree, if there's a chimney to be taken down, then we, we, we would pare that out. But if it was trimming, it would be someone from the DPW running out, uh, on a one-off, one-off, one-off. And everywhere.
So in twenty twenty-one, we did not have a company.
Correct.
Okay. I just, I received some feedback from a tree trimmer in twenty twenty-one about. What was happening, but it's not, wasn't this.
Damn it. Is this something that we're gonna have to change on the document that it's got to make it more rounded, or, you know, it means, so you don't have seven foot on one side and twelve foot on the other side, and what are we, is this something that we need to do? Or, I, I mean.
Because I personally like to see it, and this, after reading this document, I'd like to see it both sides at a certain point, like. Because I just. That's what I'm talking about, I mean, I don't want this stuff looking like Edison sort of. Where, you know, you got this tree that happened, it's cut off because.
Exactly.
You know, so.
Maybe, maybe there's something that, that should talk with, uh, Parks and Rec, that is also on the tree board about updating, taking, taking another one of that, the tree specification document, not being able.
Well, yeah, it's also. When we do road projects, like we found a intersection crossing. I mean, we just did one side as we went through there, you know, so maybe it's something, it's something that you may go look at.
And that happened over here. When they were, oh, right in front of the deep bowl here, they had to cut some of the tree back just to be able to get the equipment to do.
But, 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 that's also what we're trying to avoid, or just the actual. Trimming program, is, is avoiding to use, you know, this one tree or this tree here, this tree here, this one here. One tree you're getting into when everybody is doing the maintenance that, you know, needs to be done, does need to be done.
I just think that there's, you know, that. If, if it's a simple limb that is obviously something I would dip in my lawn mower. You know, I trim that off, and the neighbors who trim that off, that's a personal, that doesn't happen with things, but, you know, I can look up in that tree. And there's, there's limbs that are growing, you know. Not the way you would traditionally have a, right, I thought that the people that knew what they were gonna do would be. Doing that kind of thing, and I don't see any evidence of that, I just see a hack on the street side primarily. With little care for the other stuff I mentioned. So I, I don't think I saw you.
No, no, you're fine.
And I'm out, I saw everyone actually say something, so apologize, and maybe the heads up, and I'll put it up to talk about.
I do.
Yeah, another question. Okay. Both out on us.
So I recall, six or seven years ago, we had another significant trimming in West Ridge, and we claimed at that time that it was too aggressive, um. Perhaps we ought to plan on having someone from the city staff out there the first day or so to calibrate our expectations. Uh, there are some weirdness with different tree species, all the structure works, minus thirty-five hours yet, but, um, it seems like it's continuing. Issue when we've done this in the past, and maybe we ought to just plan first couple hours, go out there, do a couple trees, say this is what we like, keep doing this. And it's a shame, because if you know what you're doing with a chainsaw, you can't get a nice clean pad.
Yeah, you can, it's just hard, look to branch, you know, I mean, usually the branch has the rigidity that goes back, but it's really small.
You cut short.
I'm with it, I'm just saying that, you know, I don't get that, it wasn't left that way. Back to you, is this gonna apply for DTE, or electrical company do, I mean. What's that?
No, they do, they do.
It's good, and they, they. They're pretty.
They have a lot of, they have a lot of trees that they bought, they're good. Well, I mean, the, I'm talking about, I am, most of the trees I'm talking about were planted within the last, you know, twenty years, it was the seventh only twenty years, I guess, so, most of these trees are not. Mature, highly, or even into the, uh, the parents might be, it's a tour, but, but, the herbals still a lot growing, you can do, I think, definitely want them to look nice, and I guess they're all wanted to be in. But it's not being, it's just not being done in front of the bigger. And there's other branches at the same level of ones that were taken off. Well, we're actually gonna get bigger, so if you want to do, or they should come off now. Or the other one shouldn't have come off, or anything.
Yeah, it's. We should try to move the guns. Sure. So, so. All right, this is your, but, and, and, oh, here. So. You got, I heard plus you done, it was on month early because of, we, we go, go with the tower, which is slated for Friday. Um, we did a pressure test this afternoon for about two hours to, just to think about. Tomorrow, we're doing a little tiny room, and we should be good to go on. And hopefully it's, uh. It goes smoothly, because. It's nerve wracking anyhow, um, and then we got, uh, water and sewage testing in, I think, or in pools.
Well, any questions for Tim? Okay, thanks.
Thanks.
Next up is our community development manager. Michelle, how are you?
I'm fine, I was council this evening. I have all of council this evening. Okay, so you've got my report in front of you, before I go into updates, ask me your questions, please.
Uh, Jamie and Zach.
My question pertains to the resident complaint about trash from Lot Montaigne blowing into the park, and in that general area, and I know Grace was handling this a bit. Uh, so to the extent that you're able to answer these questions, I might even want Josh to weigh in, because my understanding is part of the rest of the kind of community cleanup type thing. Which is sort of the timeline of this, so beginning of March, the resident reached out to me to express concern about trash from Lot Montaigne blowing into the park. And, uh, and what could be done about that, and so I shared the information with Michelle, Grace, Justin, et cetera. Uh, later on, in March the twenty-seventh and the thirty-first, the resident went out on his own, and then I guess on a separate occasion with his daughter and himself, did a lot of cleanup. Uh, he has pictures of like the multiple bags that they stuffed, well, um. My understanding is that there was some, there was this, maybe sort of a public park cleanup date. My sense is that a lot of the cleanup had already occurred before that, uh, and so I just wanted to share that with anybody who was actually there, maybe went to assess the situation and thought. Oh, this isn't as bad as this person made it clean out, because he actually went and took it upon himself to do some of the cleanup. Um, so I, it's not clear to me actually that Lot Montaigne did anything to clean up, that perhaps between the resident and the public park cleanup effort. That took care of it all, uh, his, the resident's a strong assessment based on where he was cleaning it up and what the trash was, but yes, trash as well as anywhere, but it seems like it's highly concentrated around dumpsters. There, and so his suggestion was having Lot Montaigne regularly monitor after the trash day there, doesn't seem like an unreasonable request to say after dumpsters are empty, ask somebody. Go check, pick up any additional trash, um, I don't know if that's a request the city can make, or the city can make a point to inspect after. A couple of the next trash days to see if they're noticing anything, uh, I did also hear from the resident just earlier this month that. Maybe he had shared with other people he was doing this, and they said, okay, you should check it over by bushes, so he also went over, um, by bushes and found a considerable amount of trash, so he cleaned up what. He felt that was sort of on the city's side of it, that there's still a lot of trash that's kind of between that park and bushes, so. I guess sort of an update, and, and I'm sorry, I didn't realize there was going to be a community park cleanup date, otherwise I would have shared the information with the resident, was in the meantime doing all this additional cleanup, I hope it was still effective.
Yeah, I mean, our, our goal was to get cleanup work straight around this last weekend.
Okay.
And so, if, if the resident hadn't gotten to that, uh, but we, Josh, along with, um, along with your, maybe Josh went out and, um. Did, did some additional cleanup, um, it sounded like it was, there was less high expect in that area than. Probably because the resident had gone out and had work.
So were you over by the bushes side during that time?
We get both sides, I mean, most of the work that we're doing, they were buying of the, of the, of, well. That kind of, or basketball, or, so most of stuff he pulled out of there, just trying to get some stuff out of the park, I mean, we probably did the four trash bags and stuff out. But, and, and to the, to the questions, I sent the pictures of the different spots, so I notice that.
Yeah, we're, we're, we're starting the process, um. So to get that area cleaned up.
Okay.
Um, because there is equipment in that, kind of little building there.
Okay.
It goes to there as well.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
That's awesome. Well, I think Zach has, if you're.
Yeah, thank you.
Just trying to that, I have received, um, comments from residents behind pushes that they are seeing more and more trash, and that it had been a problem in the past, and calm down, but. I don't know what's going on now, it's come back, um, my other question would be, um. When, if there's an opportunity for us to get folks for the streets, um, parking. For the businesses sooner, I recall we had some start dates, but the presumption was we're gonna have snow, we don't have snow anymore. And we'll do the outdoor seating.
Yeah, the outdoor seating.
Yep, is it, I would be very supportive of ways to get them out there sooner, since we're not gonna have snow or snow operations that we're gonna have to worry about. Because there's a set starting date.
Right, right, that's a good first, um, um, they all have NACs, have their applications that, um, or their certificates of insurance. So I do not see this happening, but going first.
Okay.
We'll get our barriers and everything ready for meetings, um. I'm small-minded, certainly, just to get new information for their social, their, it's, it's.
Well, and I, I guess long term, I'd be supportive of a bit more flexibility on start and finish dates, or at least the start date. Um, if that's something we need to change the ordinance to stay in order earlier date, as approved by resolution council, something like that, um. I think it'd be good to have that flexibility.
Definitely.
Also be nice if folks could have a flat platform, so it's only visibility, still have to be segregated if you use a monkey, a wooden ramp.
So, right now, when you establish you by your ordinance, often flexibility, that they can either do a. Platform tablet, or they can do a just a ramp, if, if the council would prefer to have more, um. A, a tablet where it's, one, it looks a lot better, and it does accommodate mobility better. In many ways can be much safer, um, I can bring the amendment to you and we can make it a requirement. How do you want the downtown to work in March? That's a bright question, and it just goes to happen, sorry.
It would require them to have a ramp, right?
I'm sorry, yeah, I require you have a ramp, yes.
Zach, are you done?
Yeah, I'm done.
Joe, if you're asking.
Um, I had a question about the, um. Item two D, your thirty-one sixty-five Baker Road. Just the last sentence says, carnage and local bigger enforcement, she's laying ingress, ingress, thirty-one sixty-five person, apparently, native.
So what they wanted to do on Baker Avenue, um. There's not a lot of carnage, so you get a building, you get a driveway. And based on what they were proposing at the time, that didn't leave a lot of area of things like where you put the dumpster or even the trash cans. Uh, trash cans would be stored in garage, but we are putting them out in order to. Um, be picked up by this management, you're not lining your entire carnage and the next door neighbor, um, with a bunch of trash cans. Uh, so that's what I mean by ingress, egress was an issue based on what we wanted to do. Um, picking up this construction property really frees up the creativity of designing the site, so that that no longer is an issue. They may be able to come in on Baker and go out for us.
So. Project they submitted before was, was this one that was gonna shoot more in, and.
Yeah.
So are they gonna extend it to the other property?
Um, I don't know how they are going to do it, because they have a right there, but yes, they will connect both properties, they will come around, and they will redevelop it as a community property. Does that help?
Yeah.
I don't know what it's gonna look like at this point, I don't know how they're gonna modify it.
Right, well, so are they saying that they think that ingress, egress is gonna be addressed by, by extending it to the other property?
So. I'm making the.
I think that's Michelle. Wait, you're not.
That's Michelle.
Just like that.
Okay.
It will be better because they're not limited to one street.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay, sorry.
Is your?
Okay. Um. Okay, uh, I won't go over anything in my report, other than, as it pertains to thirty forty-five Broad Street, the verbal update is we did everything with time sale, uh, this morning. That, I think, involved the different two scenarios, that's the financing, um, there was a lot of discussion, um. They are going to be meeting with, um, um, the higher ups at M E B C on April twenty-third, they'd like to hear their commitment from M E B C, um. Well.
Twenty-sixth. Twenty-sixth.
Oh, did I, I didn't mention.
Twenty-third.
Sorry, twenty-sixth is the new date for the meeting, um, uh. We are having a follow-up meeting next Monday, um, they're going to, um, they call them sensitivities, so it, it's basically taking their form up. And plugging in different sets of numbers and values, um, for example, um, um, the committee would like to see the DDA's city capture. A certain percentage of the revenue that would be generated by the project, that would normally be plugged in by the developer to reverse for the improvements that he's making, which means Brownfield cleanup. Um, uh, many communities do a hundred percent, they're just, yeah, just to go a hundred percent of the capture to the developer, get the brownfield. Um, uh, paid off quickly. That'd work for some communities, um, in, in Dexter, what we've done, or in Grandview Commons, we required to keep twenty-five percent of the capture. That came in and paid a developer back with seventy-five percent, and we did that over the course of the, it was a fifteen or sixteen year. Plan would be, um, naturally twenty years total, and, um, uh, the developer was fine with that. And it was, if they would. Pay off sooner, right?
I, pardon me.
Yeah, that will be fantastic, guys, in China. Yes, so, um. So we're going to use for consistency that same policy of the world, we collect some revenue, um. And the developer gets the balance, the, the majority to pay off his, uh. Costs for the environmental cleanup, done that next week with some different sensitivities, different amounts, twenty-five percent. Fifteen percent, thirty percent, different ways to look at that, that performer to see where, how that impacts the gap. Um, that they have for financing, so. Um, trying, during his, um, um, report, they have more detailed information. If they would like to share, um, DTE will be doing tree trimming in Dexter over the course of the next few weeks. Um, um, as I explained to, uh, Councilman Schloss earlier today, um, it's gonna be going down Fourth Street. I'm actually meeting with Kurt and the representative from DTE tomorrow morning. And then we're gonna walk Fourth Street, um, there's a lot of trees on Fourth Street that are gonna be affected, um, what we're going, what we're trying to balance is. Do we have DT, especially on some of these smaller ones that are less than eighteen caliber inches? Do we have DT just trim them? Or do we have DT take them out, take all the stuff away with them, and then over the course of the next few, um, seasons, we plant new trees. We plant new trees in the driveway that won't go into the wires. Um, that's something that we're gonna work out with uh with Kurt and DTE tomorrow. And part of the reason for utilizing uh DTE to remove the trees is it does take some of the burden off D W. Um, so it's it's a balancing act because for some people, they're not gonna like the fact of the treatment. And they recognize that. Um, for the larger trees that are over eighteen inches, eighteen caliber inches. Um, it's gonna depend on what's the condition of the tree. Because if it's one of the big silver maples. And they're just gonna come in and do that big ball cut like they do. That's not gonna do a whole lot for us as the city for that tree. Because most of those silver maples are riding from the inside out and cutting them like that is only gonna exacerbate it all that. Once you're, everything goes into those projects, it's. Not great, so um.
These are all trees in the driveway?
These are all trees in the driveway.
So around Broad, all the way in. Are we communicating with the residents?
I'm sorry?
Are we communicating with the residents?
Going to be, yes, but that's part of the reason for walking in first, so I know exactly what trees, what addresses, who we have to notify. Before they go out.
Okay, so you're not actually cutting them?
No, this is, this is um onsite.
Due diligence.
Okay.
Um, so they've asked if they can cut the trees?
Yes, they've provided us with ones that are, um, yes. Yes, they asked us.
Okay. Yeah, if when the rest has agreed that you can take down a tree, if they have purchased a tree that's there, are there, the city going to um put the new ones in or nothing? Or there gonna be a cost here? How do you think that goes out there?
So. From the way I see it. If we're taking these trees down, we will replace them. I don't know how many trees may get taken down in this entire corridor. So it may happen, like I said, over the course of a number of planting seasons. What I see striking the balance is if the resident wants a tree sooner than later. I would offer you the caution and option. Um, that helps. That would help with that process. Um.
So.
Yeah, so. It's short of coming back to council, but I didn't say, I need X.
I never thought.
Okay. And then the last thing, um, so no Mo May is that, not in Dexter, but City Van Arbor has adopted a resolution. Um, they did that unanimously and it was in the paper on April third. So this is their way of supporting um, pollinator habit that. These lives in heaven. Um, um, this, we did not adapt this last year. Um, there were residents that. Were confused by the whole no May initiative. They thought it was countywide. They thought every community instituted it. Um, so when we sent out those violation letters. Um, in May last year, we now push that. Um, but um, of the thirty some violations that went out initially. We ended up only tickling one person because. The second round um had different people than the first round with the exception of the one. Then the second round didn't have any repeaters with the exception of the one and any of that all got taken care of. Um. But that lack of maintenance in the spring prompted City Council to amend the ordinance and we have a new law, we need control ordinance. We posted the notice in the paper about the requirements. Um, um. It went in the paper on April fifth, so just last. Just last week, sorry.
Yeah.
Um. But we now got a resident asking the council will consider adapting no May, so. Is that something the council wants to consider?
That was they don't. I know.
Actually had a note and I made a note in my Google Calendar, come up, I don't know, maybe I have the whole week's data on the words, but ask about no May because everyone heard this from last year. Uh, I mean, I think when we talked about it last, we were concerned about. What happens to these extra long grass clippings when they are ultimately cut and storm longer, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, I would be inclined to drive for a year and see if those negative effects actually happen. Uh, I could go with them mainly.
Sir?
I think there are a lot better ways to support pollinators. And letting folks grow their lawn. The lawn, which doesn't have, especially in manicure areas, a lot of hair lines or other things in it.
Is that John?
No, that was it. Do I think the silence of ownership has consensus on the board?
That's why we're not changing the ordinance.
There's no more.
There's no.
Thank you, thank you, I hate grass. Appreciate it.
Okay, I think we're on page three and I'll start a segment that wants to be a board under nine three or eight three. But we've got five, we're down to enter.
This also might go to Josh. I received another request about the update on the sidewalk, stickers, water reels, whatever was down. And then we are waiting on it would be better weather and actually it might be that time here.
But I I I place the order of celebration. Hopefully this be in the next couple of weeks, so then I just have to get a heat gun and me and one of the D W guys involved there and. Go the outfits.
Do you think maybe May?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping to have. I would say hopefully sooner. I'm just gonna keep track of the weather because this is. Crazy back end. The worst, the worst case scenario, like go out and I got my relief, let's have it next week or something.
Yeah.
I go out there and you know, freak snow and D W go up and.
Right.
Very fast. I'll I'll shoot for.
Thank you.
So, um, I mean, uh, meeting this that we have coming down. I am not in favor of having a little session that. Uh, practice this constantly, so. Um, I don't think we made a motion to have a meeting. Do I need to make a motion to say I'm not gonna have that meeting or I don't need to do that since I'm just going first?
There there was a motion proposed on that item to until it works actually gonna be held on it. Um, and so I guess I I would just want direction on when I do want to hold that work session, maybe if you don't want it at the next meeting.
You have a leave if you want.
Do it. I don't know, but I can make a motion. That's fine. That's, that's fine. Um, I want to make a motion for to cancel the work session on April twenty fourth at six P M and postpone it down there.
Yeah. Those qualifications for the work sessions that are going to be there.
Yeah.
And cancel that one?
What even happened? Are you on it?
I'm willing.
Cancel the work session. I'm sorry, the motion to cancel. That was a special work session on. The postponer desk. Okay, is there a second to that?
Oh, no.
Special. That was a point of order saying that special meetings wasn't on the agenda tonight. And because we're not in the business section, so we're gonna hold them, correct?
So there's a kind of suggestion that this will be. On the next meeting. Right, I'm gonna do that.
Correct. Well, that's why it'd be nice to have our rules wired, obviously, right for meetings.
Well, if we could agree on a date for a work session, we could just subdue.
I I would say.
I don't, I guess I don't, given him direction, I don't see it as a problem. I don't, I don't think that violates our rules.
The the larger issue, it's kind of concerning that this body would not want to step, set its flag down and say, we will continue to have fire services in the city. During whatever instruction looks like.
We're not discussing this.
Okay, well.
I just. Okay, well, without discussing the item, I wanna say that my second for this is not. Because I don't wanna discuss the item. I think we can discuss the item at a regular meeting. We do not need a session. Yeah. So this was originally proposed at a regular meeting and there was a resolution that Zach had drafted and the comment was received that. This is something that is better discussed during the work session, session, so that multiple members of council can be creating this sort of a resolution. Um. I would like to talk about this topic, whether it be at a work session or a regular meeting, but I don't wanna get into an endless loop of switching when we're doing it and then never doing it.
I I actually personally like to get into the project before I know what needs to be in that. Resolution, but we haven't even authorized the survey for the property yet. So personally, I think it's pretty sure to have it. And I think that was the sentiment you made. Right?
Yeah, and I had.
And beyond that, beyond that, I mean.
So the, I made a motion because after further investigating, after we had a meeting and set it up. The charter clearly says that we provide fire services in the city. So there's no need for a resolution that says the same thing, so. I mean, frankly, we keep on having these work sessions. We're not making very much progress out of it. They're not productive. This doesn't seem to be something that there's a lot of support to or done. Like I said, it's redundant, so I would like to postpone it indefinitely because. I don't wanna talk about, so that's why I made a motion that.
Now, for for me, it's that, um, yes, as you said, we are committed. I don't think anybody at this table is not committed to provide fire safety in public safety for our our citizens. And to me is just, we don't have enough information right now to have that meeting. I, we. I I don't think from now on, or when the resolution first came, that we have enough information added that we can have a productive conversation about it. Um, so I I like it postponed. Um, I I don't want it completely out of our minds because at some point. And I I I get what uh why it's saying because at some point we actually need to have a conversation about. If the eighty one forties continue where things go during construction and that, so it's a natural. It's a topic that will naturally come up.
That.
So section seven point one of the charter, he says, the council shall provide fire protection and rescue services within the city. It doesn't say that we shall provide a building. So we we can provide services. That comes from over there, over there, and I think it's important that we say, yes, we're going to do what it takes to make sure there's someone here instead of six miles away. That's all.
If the council.
I think you'll maybe if you are something that's not an issue, we are going to provide fire services. There's, but you know, it's a, there is no one at this table who wants it to come in six miles away. The timing of this conversation is a different topic. We're not ready to have it. I don't wanna discuss it on the twenty fourth. It's the cart before the horse, and that's, that's it.
Hey, Justin, please go to vote to cancel workshop on the twenty fourth and postpone it definitely.
Council on Hubbard.
Yes.
Griffin.
No.
Michelle?
No.
All right.
Yes.
Flaw.
Yes.
That was fair.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. I'm curious. Um. I'd like to ask if we want to continue the rules discussion of the day. So, yes, or yeah?
I would. Yeah.
Why?
I would not.
Okay.
Joe? I said I'm in favor of the existing rules. You know, there's specific things that they go on their orders and then there's like, be glad to discuss them, but.
Good. Yeah, I heard it with Joseph. There's some people.
Can I just clarify the process for that then?
Sure.
Um, so that if in the future somebody brings up as a regular agenda item, specific amendments to the council rule. Are we going to be able to address them during that regular meeting or are we gonna postpone to a work session? But then later we might postpone indefinitely.
So Jamie, I would think if there was a rule change. Or two, you know, we can handle, or we didn't. It will get all that in front of us. We have our time in, but I would think if somebody brought forward a rule change or two. And both that should be on the agenda, we could vote that for down as a change. As painful as that can be from now until the end of time.
So people rather see those come as individual agenda items?
Yeah, that's how it's gonna be done.
One supposed change, one agenda item.
Well, a couple of them. I I think we actually made some progress on.
I thought we did too.
A few things this morning or whatever you wanted to say about this morning. Early today.
Thanks for coming by.
Justin, thank you.
Um, so we had a good Easter event this last Saturday. Um, there were a ton of kids that showed up. Um, we had a really good number of volunteers that were there to help out and could be both from park recommendation. Um, from there and. Um, one offered to wear the costume this year, which was really nice and comfortable. Um, I'm perfectly fit, quite, bit joshed and wet. As much as we try. Shining, um. Um, but uh, things went really well. Um, are are nice. Um, several thousand eggs. Um. We did submit a grant to quota, um, but uh. Only six communities and the nation will get picked. Um, we applied for Milbury Park North. Um, just to put it out there and and see what happens. Um, and it looks like we are coming within the eligible funding range of the drinking water asset management grant, uh, which is another hundred thousand. Um, which helps with sewer water line investigations and determining lead copper or other. Um, does anybody have any questions for me?
Justin, when? When did Edel and their consultants want to do the testing in the right way? Remind me the date that they submitted?
It was early May.
So does that mean that next meeting we'll have that item on our agenda?
Correctly.
Okay, so when the.
Okay, so one of the council aware of that. But that's, that's coming. Questions for Justin? Zach?
Um, the the check product I recommended contacting the D A F D, they've dealt with this for a number of months, and you would have said that the.
As you can see, see what the fine structure is, but, um. You know, you just encourage people to go.
It's it's a very difficult time to tell people not to use water outside, that's when all the gardens are established. Is the water gonna be out of the community garden too?
Oh, I were wondering. But the the community garden doesn't usually start up until, you know, mid to late May.
So he did this four years ago, back, he went through six weeks. So I don't know what this would be in different fact, it started at the beginning of April and went into. Second or third week of May, because we had our time to start it, the reason we don't think anybody wanted to do anything, because it wasn't a very. It was cold, it was too cold outside from the middle, in fact, we had problems with the tower, just for the reason, so. I've been feeling calls, Justin, been feeling calls, you know, sending out emails to people, I understand, I'm really concerned. Um, this is something that's happened once every twenty years. So, and I like I told people, especially with gardens and stuff like this. If if someone wants to go over in the house and fill a can of water, show me that goes outside, that's, that's not a problem, it's like I told Ali this morning. One hose coming out, because she had concern about fire, one hose going out, is it gonna back us now, five hundred? Yeah, there's potential, so we tried to keep everything down, we talked to the fire chief, had a meeting with him yesterday, or the day before. Day Monday. Last, excuse me, Thursday, we had a meeting with him, I talked to him, explained everything, like, for instance, when they open up their hydrants, they like to open them up. Full board, clean everything out, fortunately more impressionable, it it can drop drastically, so we tested this, um. Before with the hydrants flowing, so we know that we can get water if they need assistance and stuff. Um, they've been directed to get a hold of myself and more than emergency call, preferably be me. Um, I don't care what time it was on the day, I told them how many times they want, we can work through that, I can monitor the system, make sure things are going. It's just, I understand it's not a great time of year, but unfortunately I can't do this in the fall, because if you do this in the fall, then it takes a time to run the risk of too cold weather to paint your car, so. You know, that's why we do it, and I don't think it's gonna take, we we did the the ban until the first of June, I won't think it's gonna take that.
So, yeah, we 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 had, we we set up the notice. Um, being conservative that it will take longer than we actually expected it to take forever.
May I address the check part?
Please.
Um, I actually have had a conversation with the F D, um, along with Washington County Sheriff's Office, uh, St. John Township, um. And a couple of other people, so. What seems to be coming out about this is that it's a fairly widespread thing going across the company, it has hit several municipalities, the Washington County Law Commission. Um, several levels of government, it's also my understanding that it has hit, um, local businesses. And also then, um, have had their checks taken this way, um, the the our ship, in talking to him. Has referred it to the Inspector General Post Office, there is a belief that there might be somebody inside the post office somewhere. That is doing this, I've also heard a theory of people fishing in mailboxes. You know, with a belt and some tape, try to pull stuff out, our checks aren't put in a mailbox, they're delivered directly, um. So this is something that is subject of ongoing conversations with the county right now, if we're trying to piece together exactly. What is going on in this, but it seems to be pretty widespread, and it's more difficult because you have multiple banks, multiple layers of investigation going on. Some of the banks that are being used by some of these organizations, they just don't even have the product controls on. Um, to the extent that other banks do, some piecemeal now, ours unfortunately was piecemeal. Um, they had positive pay and they had a positive pay and they weren't combined, um. So it's a problem, it's a, it's something that is difficult to address because there are so many different entities in the world, but we are.
Thanks, Bray. Other questions for Justin, or do you have any? Okay, uh, just a couple of things, we know revision of our record, uh, immediately, yeah, just running. With a common sale, there's a follow on one on the seventeenth. I didn't add in here, but, um, I'll show in the. There are a couple of things that are economics that I believe possible to. But they're way here on a little bit, or at least understand, um, and there was sort of a. Most, if you will. Very closing, um, but that's. Down a little bit. In terms of the city manager review meeting coming up on the ball. And hopefully all of that, I'll do that here, um, have a reminder that I'm assuming Justin will ask if they will have those mentioned, if they will be, they'll hold a whole session. If we have the audits online, that off the record, but. He'll request that, and I think we should make it open if he does request it all. Within that call session, I'm gonna get a chance to go first and talk to us, and we can ask some individual questions or. Um, if the comments that we want, or any. How you doing, what you doing, so, kind of a format for that. Or the senior meeting, that we have, that's its platform, or something, or not, seven o'clock, I'll, I'll. We did have a strategic planning session on April fifth. For the A F D. Um, we have a draft vision statement and a draft mission statement that we came up with, and we'll get that included in my next package, so we can agree what the draft is. We were, that separate open, for a couple of board members that put that, I mean, it's a certain amount there anyway. The draft that we have, that will hold shit as it's sworn. Um. I hope, we jump back up to the April third meeting, that I had with, um, two resident. Uh, Will Hathaway, and Simon, and Barry Lott, and we represent this from. Um, the song on their papers, um, it's my understanding from that meeting that. Um, David Love, you know, co-代表, representing. Some type of preservation option to the president, or which I believe is this Thursday, if I have a date right, if they're twenty. So.
You speak up just as well.
I'm sorry, we're gonna be meeting with the preservation board, sciatic preservation board, which means I believe on this Thursday, I don't know if they're through the day or. Maybe it is, but, uh, about their plan to preserve certain portions of the land. My understanding that they have submitted an application to do that, this is the moral. Discussion, first discussion, face to face with them, um. And pending, pending that meeting, uh, I may invite David Love to come and speak, I must have done. Either this one fourth or May eighth, or that, I think it's eight, but I mean. Um, just to give us an update on what they're sending, they they found that out, and. You know, I have a question here, you know, kind of where they're at, they do have a, so, um. The concept of the working judge, but I think if that will everybody heard, we'll say that, so, I wanna put that on there. There are any questions for me?
Yeah, if you can answer that, I'm not for Justin, um, should we be expecting to get any additional materials before Wednesday, I think maybe in the past? I mean, he has appeared with that, just to share with us at that time, and we can answer that at that time.
Um, I haven't seen it, if you've prepared something to pass out. But you're right, a lot of times, in fact, all plays accomplish, or it's a much better than. But I haven't seen that yet.
It'd be nice to get that somewhere in advance, if possible, I thought this might suggest.
Okay. Especially if it's like thirty pages. Okay, um, I think we are down to, oh, I'm sorry, the council reports, or Zach, you have a question for me?
Yeah, just a correction for, uh, K. Yeah, what's the Arbor Day one?
Oh, the K three?
Yeah, it should be dated the tenth of April, month of thirteenth. Page one nineteen, sorry, I missed the word here.
Okay. A ready council member reports under page seven. Okay. I got a consent agenda.
I will move it, but who's gonna call the vote, Justin?
We'll have Josh do that.
Okay, okay, so I'm going to include the four items on the consent agenda. Billions here only about two hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and fifty two dollars and sixty cents, location of notice, the winter utility bill. Twenty twenty three Arbor Day proclamation would be added, the date as Zach mentioned, and. And a reserve unlimited string habitat improvements in the British West.
Okay, most of my law, I plan, I got it, second by South Arrow, if you will. Just to back sometime, if you please call the vote to approve the consent, the four items on the consent agenda, you all will change green. The the date on the Arbor Day proclamation should be the tenth of seven.
All right, um, November seventh, fair, yes, Griffin?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
All day?
Yeah.
Flaw?
Yes.
Hover?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion carries, thank you, we're on page four of the agenda, there's no unfinished business meeting. And I believe we moved item two ahead of item one, so we are on two, considering, you know. Eighty one thirty, anything better now since the proposal. And while you're down, the F B I. And G two consultant, or how I think it's been for four, two twenty five.
I think that one.
So let me mention that. Second by South Arrow. Okay, we have to leave it with the analysts. I think, I guess, it's you. And if you'd like to push off in there at all.
No idea, thanks, video, you know.
Had a busy couple of weeks?
Yes, yes, it is, yes, it's good to be here with you tonight, um.
Thank you.
To answer any questions you have, I I did have a couple things I wanted to cover, but if there's any questions on what I've already provided.
But questions on.
Just a overview, so I provided a additional consulting, I've been C P's. And I just didn't kind of look backwards, um, previous course, but I outlined the task that we would be doing in this phase in my. In a duration, so this schedule as part of the memo can outline some tasks in a little bit more detail. And also the time assigned, method in which we accomplish those tasks in terms of, for this digital meeting, virtual meeting, or an update to the plan, so. That's kind of the overall of, uh. Probably see the task holding up, that's why we kind of timeframes look flexible, I'll point out that initially I thought the task would include. Uh, a programming verification step, or call that a workshop if you want to. And then a free additional user group workshops, but in this task list, if you look at it. I I see a need for a port, so I've included that, um, and that really is to take full then, and to see on. As part of the team and the constructibility review and the budgeting process, so I added that form, thinking it would prove out to be a better outcome.
So I appreciate the schedule there, so help me with, help me understand a little bit if you can. How you see. A request from your team for. Design fees or fees that the process would put in front of us. Between now and December first. And the reason I am asking that question. Is it's unclear to me whether or not we will be. So appropriating. Five percent of the bond fees could be there, indicated we want, we have asked our by counsel to issue. Okay, those, those, those bonds would be issued on or about June one, eight point four million. Eight point four million, twenty thousand, to be exact. So we have to authorize and appropriate four hundred and seven thousand within six months. To the five percent of the. Eight, or twenty. So far, we've talked about price thirty five thousand for you. Or where was that, two months ago, right?
Right.
And you're asking for forty four now, so that's approximately eighty. Do you see a request for more, for it to close the difference? No, sometimes.
Then we walk through that a little bit, then I'll get to the answer in the end, I think, is that.
Yeah.
The the process over the next twelve weeks will exhaust that, possibly minus eighty thousand dollars, and get to a point. That we determine, or at least you've determined of the options that we work through, which way to go. Whether it be renovation, expansion, or a new building, each one of those solutions would be a different. Cost structure for the rest of the team to finish.
Okay.
Uh, including the C M, so the C M's gonna have a cost also built into this next twelve weeks. And extend a little bit further in their first proposal. And reasonably, I can think if we were at a decision point in July, moving, uh, uh, ahead. At a reasonable pace by December, we'll have. Construction documents ready to go, and probably ninety percent of our. Phase two documentation, which really is about eighty percent of the overall fee. Would it reach that? Yeah, I think so, with the C M's cost too. And I can write that out in a little bit of a schedule, how paid on schedule or bill out schedule would work between now and December to kind of. You you prove it to myself and show it to you how that cost would be spent, uh, between now and then.
So, okay, so so help me then, when you, when do you think we would found like this forty five thousand dollars? When do you see the next? Date that did be requested, where it was roughly, I don't even exactly, but.
Right, middle of July.
So both you have a C M?
Yeah, all you're, you're putting now, the the end of this phase, the C M is going to have, uh, pre-construction services cost. And we're looking to have them come on board, say, May twenty second, so they have six weeks working alongside of us to come back with a product to you. Make a decision in the early part of July.
Okay.
And then that would be, it's this solution, that's the solution.
Help me with, what is a typical C M? Free development services fee relative to the cost of the project or percentage, or do you have any idea what that?
My guess, this would be in the twenty five thousand dollar range to get to this decision of. This solution has these constructability challenges, this one has this challenge, and the cost for both of them would be in that twenty five thousand dollar range. And that would be them working about six weeks. From, uh, the kind of the end of May to the beginning of July.
Okay.
That's my, my guess.
Okay, so that, that gives us a little over a hundred. And then you think there'll be a balance of. Three hundred thousand in synergies after that, that the Lewis.
I think so, yeah. I I can work it out, but just. It's about eighty percent of the total cost of the project from a professional fee standpoint, could be certainly that range between July and September.
Okay, and will the C M have any costs? Yeah, in six weeks, or is that all vol and you, something else?
They would have continuing, uh, fees for phase two before construction starts. The continuation of pre-construction, so they'll work alongside of us. And the committee in development and feedback to the development or constructibility reviews, basically. Offering better solutions, better product selection based on availability and that sort of thing. Won't be a date number for them, but there will be time and costs for them.
So, so David, I I asked Justin to bring on the agenda item. And potentially consider multiple issuance of the bond, it's kind of all at once.
Okay.
Or, well, for true reasons, one, I want to ensure we're able to appropriate for five percent within the six months, which is giving you telling. Reasonable sure, if you think we can do that, it's also only delayed on something.
Yeah.
Um, the other reason to do that would be. If through some miracle, cost didn't need to get to eight point four million. Okay. You answered the question, but I didn't even answer it.
My question, if I could offer or play something out there, so, uh, task one, it's kind of a parallel path, us moving into program verification and into. Design exploration is bringing onboarding of the C M. And I would like to work with administration initially to say, here's some rough draft for this, um, a request for. For this request for response by the construction management. Community and basically there, and I've shared this before, there are two primary. Options. CM of agency or CM as instructor, you may remember that, but I did bring some information I can pass out. If that's okay.
Sure. Okay.
Okay. It's been a test, you want to help? No, we're not, but it's in the summer, I'm really low set, and again, I, I have shared this in the past. And there's some slight tweaks to this because obviously the environment and construction is changing and. Getting a little bit here and there, but. In, in summary, the two different pathways with construction management agency. The CM is your agent working with you, they're not the builder. They don't hold the, the contracts for the individual subtrains you would as the city, and they would manage that process. In, in that process, they don't really have any responsibility for construction. Or very, very little risk, and that's in the general, general sense. But they do have reversible staff cost during construction to supervise, or at least oversee. I'm going to do some engineering, there's some project engineering, administering documentation. So that's one methodology, and the other, and again, this is a very high-level summary, is the CM is a contractor. In contrast to the CM as an agent, they're your builder, they are at risk, they are responsible. In many ways, one biggest way is cost. Through their course of managing construction, working alongside designing with the committee. Before you finalize it, they'll commit to a guaranteed price. So your risk on that side of things is known before you start construction. And that's done for both, yeah, we have some nuances along the way and. Those nuances and the hybrid parts of how either one of those work can be built into the. Request for their proposal and defined in their contract. Knowing in one way or the other, whether you as a city want to be. The contract holder for multiple, like in the twenty, near thirty contracts. For different trades, or one of the CM, and you can have some risk and exposure to what the project is going to cost, or more risk and exposure. Or you want that risk to be with the. CM, this is the real basic question, and I can form the RFP to. Let the community know we're looking for responses in those two different ways, or one. So if you had a strong feeling, you want to manage multiple contracts, or you want to manage one. Or do you want to put the risk burden? Onto the CM versus holdback. It would help me greatly to put the RFP together.
That? Yeah, I was a bit confused, I wasn't, I didn't recall this body determining if we wanted to do construction manager, construction manager at risk or design good build. In the past, I know we discussed this, but I don't recall us ever saying that's the course we want to go. So. I was a bit confused that. We're, we're going to have construction manager. So quickly in this process, that seems very aggressive. And they're very important, very subtle differences in the different approaches that I, I don't know how the way discussed yet. That's all.
Everybody can respond, anybody could help clarify something, I thought that that's what the council has for is the construction management approach. I mean, misunderstood, but certainly it's general construction or even others of the design build approach. But I'll say that the benefit and the reason I thought we were being asked to deal with this way was. Bringing the construction manager on board early. With the biggest challenge in this project being cost, and looking at it surely upfront and all through the process was to have them. In the early stages of design, and if we're going to dive into approaches. It makes a lot of sense to have that. Real input early, earlier is better.
And I fully agree, I, I love the construction manager at risk, but I don't think this body's saying that's. No, I don't think there's been a wrong decision last point there, I agree with that, there's a question, what, which, which of these are you recommending for us?
Based on what I know, either one is something I use, but for this project, I would go CM at contractor, or X construction. So it helps with the risk.
Page two.
Page two. And, and I can repeat the challenge I see, and I think you're all aware of it, we, we have a scope of work in terms of the program needs that I feel identified. The equal of area of building. And we've also stated that we want this to be a building of a fifty-year vintage in terms of life cycle or, or. And we have a budget, and the challenge is not just to meet the budget, but the challenge is to be less than the budget. At least the budget that we've been talking about, and having someone in that. Side of things, construction would be beneficial. Not least absolutely necessary, but I think it kind of takes away some of the risk. So I, for those reasons, I think the CM as a constructor. Will probably be the best case, and it's one of the, again, I'm sorry for myself, but with the complexity of this job. In terms of if it is a renovation, expansion, the move management. Getting things in and out of that site. Safely, and again, most economically, would have benefits of someone thinking about construction, the basis of instruction. In the design decisions.
So is it, is it fair then, could we see a sample of the? All the ones listed? Related to the?
That would be my intention, create it perhaps, circulate it, get input, refine it, and you guys. Do whatever it is you want to be issued.
Well, that's us, we could do that on our next meeting.
Whenever you want.
That would keep you on, that would keep you on schedule for your week of point four solicitors, you know?
Yeah, I just want to get ball, that ball rolling in parallel to the designer program.
Is there any way that feels? Like we shouldn't follow their condition for the entire? At this point. But I would think, once you draft it with that, intend to go back to what we did with. We were thinking, what is that make sense? Both.
Well, as I'm doing, I'm going to also then reach out to the chief and have the user group from the department. Start with the verification, not sure, and I'm just going to sort of the question out, there is a. A portion of the council that wants to be involved in, it sounded like there might have been that thought. Just want to make sure I'm not excluding any component of this process that you guys want.
The, the, there's not a lot of agenda to avoid.
The user group, sorry. Okay, so I will then, I follow whatever you guys decide tonight, but I'll reach out to the chief and the department, so the. What's the verification, act like here when you guys decide.
Thanks. Okay, so right now, would you still have, we have a voting by all minutes, second question with Farah. For the three proposals. Expression or questions, Zach? Well, I can wait if someone else has. You're the only one who has a song. Okay, a question for the solicitor is that, is that going to include creating a new? Parcel description? You know?
It's a full laundry survey, it's like, great, you know. If. The teaching of parcel split or something, we can definitely drive that up as part of it.
Okay, my, my thoughts on that, make sure to work with staff, it would be. Behave the city to make sure that wherever we draw the lines, we don't require variances, a brand new building that we're building. It's kind of a poll, the. Is the flood plan evaluation going to include a new flood insurance study? Or is it going to use the one that was adopted in two thousand and twelve?
We didn't do that, well, so. And I got all the metrics, you know, above the polls, I told you.
Yeah, so I raised it because the flood insurance study from two thousand and twelve, there was a dam in place. Upriver. And it likely has affected the dynamics of the hydrology there, the choke point for this area is still the, the bridge. Down by the troll. I'm not sure if it makes it better or it gets worse, but it probably has a significant impact. It probably is going to raise the water level there, so we may not want to do it. Because there's less retention area for the water with the dam out there. All right, thank you. Or any questions, Jim?
So, these monies, because you said the bonds will be issued on or about June first, is that correct?
That, that's the correct schedule.
So then, these monies count against that bond?
And, and yeah, anything that, that we use as, or any, any. Services that go towards the design of engineering, et cetera, et cetera. For the project can be repaid through, through BACOS.
And we would intend to do that. Or like, we would do clarification to do that.
Thank you, that, that would be minus, minus ten, it's a. Sorry, against BACOS is.
So. Oh. I'm looking at. Couple few different items online. That are indicating that the dam came out in two thousand and eight.
Yeah, but the flood insurance study from two thousand and twelve shows the dam still in place.
I guess all I would offer on that is, if there's. That's a rather long, I mean, it's process to get things mapped up, so that's some of that, to be clear, that's actually the. It's got getting burned, and that's all that they want to pursue, we could. Be smart, maybe on that.
Yeah, that's, that's even a bigger pull than a, a Loma or a Loma R. Or a F sector.
It's not the big.
It's over a year, right? Well, the current, the current building is not in the flood plan. Putting it in the correct for that. So, according to the topo map on Washington County GIS. That you're referring to. I was on the junior website and looked at the. Okay, I would caution against. That statement because it looks like the FEMA contours are based on nineteen sixty, nineteen seventy, USDS topo maps that are twenty-foot intervals. When you look at the flood insurance study, it, it gives what the hundred-year flood plane is. And look at that on the two-year, on the two-foot topos that Washington County has mapped off, it, it goes right to the back door. So FEMA knows that they're fuzzy. And it's finally. And then the question. Hey, Justin, please call the vote to approve the three polls.
November, All Day?
Yes.
Michelle?
No.
Claude?
Yeah.
Griffin?
No.
Ober?
Yes.
Seven Farah?
Yes.
Heo?
Yes. Motion carries. We're down to, this is our number one, with consideration of record and staff to provide the issue as a multiple bond series. Mass system reality agenda. Or the reason that I quite briefly earlier. I guess I'm a little more confident based upon the statements that we're going to clear about a percent. Is the, is the cost of the inherited issue possible, eighty-nine of the new issues?
No. So, Tom Bowles, the city's voluntary, is also on to lend help on the legal side, but. So there's a couple of things to consider on this, and, and. In my understanding, just from looking at the. Discussion is like that, it would not be that you're going to do that, it's just the potential to do it. The one eighty-nine, I don't have a number off the top of my head, but that includes the major cost. Is an allocation of one percent of the bonds towards the underwriters discount. Which essentially with this bond, bond sale process. You're going to sell the bonds. Through a broker, and then they ultimately cut up all the bonds and resell them to mutual funds, insurance companies. Mom and pop, whoever wants to buy them, in five thousand dollar increments. That is the, an allocation of one percent of par, so approximately eighty-four thousand. Is there not to exceed amount for doing that, and that is worked into. Determining who is the ultimate winner of the bond issue based on. The overall interest rates that they're going to charge you and the overall cost that they're going to charge you for reselling. That be, obviously, if you split it into two bonds, just conceptually, you do four point two and four point two. They're not to exceed would be the exact same amount over the, the full cost, it'd be forty-two thousand on one, forty-two thousand on the other. Eighty-four thousand total, or you do it on one shot, eighty-four thousand total. So essentially that cost is going to be a wash. Subject to obviously receiving the bids in the same amount, but. The other costs primarily. RP and Tom Bowles's fee, we don't charge like, it wouldn't be fully twice, but there are a lot of processes that we have to build in. That are the same process that you have to redo, completely the same, again, no matter the far now. So there's a lot of work that we do on the voluntary side and the financial advisor side, and it don't matter about the par issue. If you issued for a million dollars or a hundred million, there's a lot of processes that are, that are the exact same, and the time invested is the exact same. So I can't speak for Tom, he can speak on his behalf, but RP would not be completely double, but you would have to incur. A second fee or a second issuance from us, from Tom, from S and P, or Rain, there'd be a lot, the, the bond. Print CPs, all that stuff would be close to double. For that. I do want to speak real quick on. There is a second consideration that we, we talked about internally in the working group, when you, when you vote a bond issue, from my. Standpoint on the financial advisor side. There is a difference. That we recommend you take into account, obviously, there's other things you have to take into account in terms of spend downs, which I'll hand it over to Tom to talk about a second here, but. One thing that we look at on the financial advisor side is when you vote a bond issue, it's, in our opinion, it's a different decision. As a community in the council than doing, for instance, like a water project, that's just a regular water project. In terms of whether or not you do two bond issues. The main thing being what you told residents in your village vote. Now, when you did the village vote, if you recall back, when you, when you did that vote with the people, those are just estimates. You are not held to stay to those amounts. I believe it was a flat two mils, right, so.
Was it about around, it would be like up to two million?
Whereas the dollar, you can estimate it, yeah.
Yeah.
So the estimate was two mils, now, if you sell the bonds and interest rates are ten percent. Which they aren't, but just for instance here, then you have to levy whatever mileage you need to make that payment. And that's a year-by-year calculation that Marine and the team will take care of. But the, when you tell the voters that what you're voting is an estimate of two mils. We're trying to keep in that ballpark, obviously, you don't want to. Go and sell bonds and have it be ten mils, you're trying to keep to that two mils. To us, that's an important caveat, when you look at this in terms of how to pick a one or two bonds. Is looking at what you would currently expect to gain in the market, and whether or not you can keep to what you told the voters. If interest rates are in a favorable position, that you can sell the bond issue in full, save bond issuance costs. Save yourself two processes and meet the commitment to the taxpayers. That is an important decision to take into account, and then you've got to turn over to the legal side and say, can we meet the spend down provisions from there? I do think that that's a little bit different than water project, for instance, of like. Trying to layer in rates and all this stuff, because ultimately. What you have to be very concerned about is if you. Make a decision to just, let's say you do the first four million, and we're going to wait on the other five million later, until like next year or the year after, when we get the rest of the money. You are taking a risk at that point that interest rates could go way against you, and now you could be in a position where your mileage will rise. If interest rates go up in the next year and you don't sell the rest of the bonds until twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. If you're taking a risk that essentially you might not meet the mileage that you told your, your taxpayers, and that's your decision, is that, is it better to. Split it and kind of figure out the process and the project total. split it and kind of figure out the process and the project totals in two different sections? Or if everything's looking good and obviously we help you with this decision, but if everything is looking good on the financial side, you can meet your your military uh, estimate to the taxpayer, maybe that's your decision as a council to go forward with the whole issue. Um, any questions on all that? I do want to make it clear that again, I'm going to turn over to Paulus and not steal all this number here, but um, if you were to go forward with one issue, it would be highly recommended and obviously Marie does this and does a great job of this. You would not just sit on the money in cash. It would be invested in allowable investments in uh, laddered CDs, pool funds, whatever makes sense based on your spend downs. So it's not like we're going to issue eight point four million dollars, stick it in a non-interest bearing checking account and leave it. You will have investment returns uh, during the time it sits in whatever investments you're allowed to invest in, so uh, turn over to Tom Bowles because I think it is important to talk about spend on provisions on the legal side.
Yeah, good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Yep. Great, um, so a couple of points that I just want to make sure are very, very clear. So there's really two tax rules that were that are in consideration here. Um, one was talked about is this concept of uh, spending five percent or entering into a binding commitment to spend five percent of the proceeds within six months. So let's just be really clear on that. You don't have to actually spend five percent of the proceeds within six months. You have to have entered into a commitment, a binding commitment to spend five percent of the proceeds. So for example, that can be a combination of these different costs that we've talked about. Some costs that have already been incurred and that will be incurred with respect to design, engineering, issuance cost for the bonds. Typically, your construction contract is the one that typically gets you over that five percent threshold in most bond issues. So again, you, it sounds like you may get close to the four hundred around the four hundred thousand dollar figure um, in actual spends within that six month period. But you don't have to actually spend it within six months, you have to enter in a binding commitment. So the question becomes um, do will you have contracts? Will you have spent enough funds and entering the contracts that will put you over that five percent threshold within six months of when we issue the bond? So basically by December first, if we stick to the same schedule. That's kind of rule number one, and the purpose of that rule is the IRS doesn't want issuers issuing bonds prior to when they need the proceeds. They're worried of just collecting the money and as Andy said, investing the funds, sitting on the investments and using those funds down the road. The way that the IRS looks on this is they're giving you a tax deal, right? These bonds are tax exempt. So that's interest to the federal government that they're not receiving. Um, so they want these projects pretty much ready to go. And that's how they determine kind of a timing perspective is your expectation to enter into a commitment to spend at least five percent or entering that commit within five months, within six months to spend five percent. The second kind of next threshold is you have to have a reasonable expectation to spend eighty five percent of the proceeds within three years. Right? So the idea is once these bond proceeds become available, eighty percent, you you have to have a reasonable expectation to spend eighty five percent of the proceeds within three years. So if we, if you receive proceeds on June one of two thousand and twenty three, that threshold is kind of determined after that three year window and that's spending eighty five percent within three years. So the question we always ask is well, when do you expect construction and how long is your construction period? Because we want to make sure that there is a reasonable expectation to spend those funds within that period of time. That's really, and from a federal tax perspective, you can only spend bond proceeds on capital expenditures. So when it comes to actually like what costs are we allocating these to? You know, your design, your engineering, your cost of issuance um, typically count as capital expenditures towards the project. So those should be allowable expenditures um, for satisfying part of that eighty five percent test. Um, as to the timing of the issuance of the bonds, that's really you know, council and staff's comfort level in that regard. Obviously, your financial advisor is going to give you as much guidance as they can on sequencing series and whether that makes sense or not. Um, again, as Andy said, I and I agree with his statement. Our our fee wouldn't be doubled, you know, the same for each issue. You know, it would be, you know, it wouldn't be the same for each, we would, it would be reduced for the first one if the issue size is smaller than the eight million four. And then there'd be obviously an additional fee for the second series that wouldn't be the same as the first one, since we'd have done some of the legwork, but again, are duplicating a lot of the um, same process of authorizing, marketing, selling and and developing closing documents and actually delivery of the bonds. So hopefully that answers some questions. I'm happy to answer any other questions on that.
So Tom, thanks for sticking with us on the meeting. Did you say that the bond issuance costs do count?
Correct. Yeah, that's a, that is part of that that's part of the uh, of the basically spending the proceeds within five, within the six month period.
I'm 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 happy to have had this conversation, but I I don't I don't think we need to change the motion unless somebody else was wrong about, I was thinking that might make sense to issuing two series, make sure we got to the five percent there, therefore, but I'm pretty confident based upon David's. The fact that the and the underwriters just come out of council?
Correct.
That's nice. That's a nice big number.
In in one sense only.
Right over the five percent, they took care of it. That works, okay. I don't need a motion on this unless somebody else wants to go down with that. I just need to do it before that. Or I wasn't sure, the projected spending plan, I guess, paid it.
I I work with numbers and I've sitting here will be totally fine with your approach. Underwriting issuance and solving RP eighty percent project cost, the five hundred thousand.
Another question, please, and in general, when I was reading that, from my own understanding, um, so is this correct, my understanding that if um, if we do this, so we can get reimbursed for the cost of the study we just approved to do um, through this, basically charging to that reimbursed or how? Um, thank you. Um, if the studies showed um, actually, another question too, what happens if the cost is less than eight point four? And the bond that we have is eight point four?
So you're going to use the exit proceeds for your next bond payment? So it'll be you are required to use it like, so let's say you have like fifty grand of contingency left or that would go towards your your next bond payment, it is required to stay within the bond, so you can't use it for anything outside of like fire equipment or anything like that, that's not in the vote. You just use that as your next bond payment, it may lower your mileage slightly or something for the first round.
Thank you. And what if um, it's not a miracle and something disastrous shows up in the report that makes us consider a location change? From what I'm reading on this is that my, what I'm understanding is that then the expenses that we are going to have for this study can no longer be reimbursed through this bond if the location is changed, is that correct?
So that that's not a a real clear answer. So if if the study says, hey, let's look at multiple multiple factors, right? Um, then likely you'll be able to include that even if you change to a different location. So the question becomes, is it a capital expenditure? And typically, a capital expenditure is tied to a project that actually gets constructed. So if a project is completely abandoned, then then there's a chance that the the cost of that study might not be reimbursable from bond proceeds if you decide to use the to choose another location. Remember from the from the, the IRS doesn't care where you build this, so it's as long as you're spending, you know, bond proceeds on the capital expenditures for governmental purpose. Um, that's all the IRS cares about. They don't care where this facility is located. Um, obviously, that's an important discussion and and decision to be made. Um, but remember also the the ballot proposal doesn't have a location in it either, so that's a decision that that council makes as to where this is going to get located. So there might be a small portion of those preliminary costs that might not be reimbursable if if the project is, you know, if that study was limited to a particular location and that location wasn't ultimately utilized, then there's a chance that that you can't reimburse for those costs and you'd have to use you know, funds on hand that were already potentially allocated for the project to to cover those costs and not reuse bond proceeds to reimburse.
Thank you. Well, yeah, please.
Okay, so nobody has anything else to ask, I'm happy with the, I have discussed. But then we want to agree. Andy, venture, can I?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Number three, to the consideration of the public safety facility user group.
Uh, with creation of a public safety facility user group to consist of the public services superintendent, city manager, a sheriff office supervisor and officer, extra prepared fire department chief and fire fighter, he's one amongst the firefighters and three council members.
Okay, what can I? Michelle? You added one person, though.
Uh, I added two. And I can explain why.
I I I caught the firefighter, what was the other?
Uh, two, two sheriff.
Oh, two, two sheriff's office also, okay, I missed that, thank you.
I'll second for this question.
Yes.
So, yeah. So I'll touch the reason why I recommend both chief and the firefighter and the supervisor and the patrol officer is that the needs and view of the facility are very different. Uh, one of the best practices in all the station design conferences are put someone who's going to be living in the building and using it twenty four hours a day as part of the group that's designing it or administering, so that's why I added those two.
In second?
I guess probably want to go by allocating where the council members are.
Um, I figured that'd be a second vote. One given simple story.
Normally I get nominated through committee, so I was planning to make a recommendation.
I just want to be clear, so people may be going to know, they're waiting for that, we heard of. Motion taken.
Okay, please call a vote to approve the size of the committee? When you make up?
Uh, also over Michelle's?
Yep.
So Farah?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
Schloss?
Yes.
Auburn?
Yes.
All day?
Yeah.
Here.
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. Um, I would like to serve on this committee. So I'm supposed to now make myself? And sit down and go down, Mr. Something. Can't make the motion, but that's what I'm representing. I think that's it needs to be affirmed by council, but that's other priorities for committees.
Oh, I can motion to support the nominations.
Okay, so let me just go back up to let's go back up to the schedule. So David, if I can challenge you a little bit, I would like to know the goals of the different workshops that you're, you've got, one is the week of five one. And the other week of five point nine and the week of six twelve, I'd like to know those prior to the meeting before that.
Yeah.
So that so that the three of us that are on the committee as the user group can get input from the full seven members or anybody else that is not on the user group prior to having the user group things.
Yeah.
So we don't, so they know what topics we're talking about, if there's questions they want to ask. Thoughts and work, I mean, we we need to do this as together as we can, and we can't all be meeting in this company the way it's worked out. So I want to do the best we can to represent and get input, and if you could help me understand what's going to happen at those meetings. So for that, if we're going to meet for the week of five one, I'd like to know by April twenty fourth, what we're expected to do at that first meeting, so tell us to think about questions we want to ask you, David.
Absolutely, in general, I often stay out, I usually prepare this. So I have thought out for everyone before we start, okay? But the first meeting, the agenda will include items that you previewed that were notified about, and at the very bottom, we'll get a look ahead, what's next? And with the meetings minutes that go off from that first work session will be preparatory information for the next meeting. So you'll get a preview of what we're going to review along with the last meeting minutes and the agenda for the meeting we're going to have. So you'll have plenty of chance to review yourself and also share. But there is a lot of wiggle that happens during the course of the project, so that look ahead part is key to what's next.
Just do the left hand, I'm trying to. Zach?
Uh, for this body's consideration, do both want this to function as a public body or not? User committee. By that, I mean, if it's a public body, it's notices, it must be meetings must be noticed, minutes must be kept, but it can make decisions. If it's not a public body, it cannot make decisions, but it doesn't have to post notices or key minutes.
No, I want it to not be public, I want it to kind of come back to this board to make a decision, although I'll set it up.
Okay.
Can we have it still be open to the public? I mean, would it still be open to the public even?
The user group?
Right, kind of like thirty forty five Broad Street user group, those meetings are to the public, right?
All right, I'll sit there.
Yeah, I mean, that's why the resident came in and said I was asking for meeting a lot of information.
Yeah, so the the resident asked to attend it.
Oh, I would. Yeah, the only thing is I don't want to get far down as to what people can make because we're going to need to do this stuff in a kind of
I wouldn't. The public, I'm saying the public.
Um, if it's public body, public doesn't have the right to speak, they can't speak, but they they don't have to.
I don't see that we do.
So we we also, if it's not a public body, you can't have four members of council attend either.
Yeah, no, I think we just keep the user group, user group, um. But I would like to ask for an amendment to my motion. I think it would make sense for you to have an alternate, because one of us can't be there. Zach would be the one, who would be the alternate?
I think Mr. Schlepp would be best suited, he's taken here at the fire station facility for many decades and can bring that practical experience to it.
Okay, yeah, would you be willing to be the alternate or the? Okay, Joe's on pace, probably.
Sure.
Okay. Just to spell the vote to approve the motion.
Thank, I'll compare my question.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Yeah, yeah, so Justin, to your point about whether a number of work members can be there, seems to me that's fuzzy. Uh, that if there's a meeting with the intent to deliberate, whether there is a council member. That if there's a meeting with the intent to deliberate, whether there is a council member present who has now an intent to deliberate. Do you have clear guidance on that or have, do you receive their guidance?
I, 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 I wouldn't be comfortable. Maybe I haven't performed a performance there without it being. A, a, a notice.
I appreciate you giving much. With the comparison, the generosity and the minutes and stuff, so we can be sharing that. Okay, you, you will feel burdened to. Okay, so motion to approve the nomination of PL, Phil Farrell and Alda as the. Sheriff says user group with Schla as the alternate.
Member Alda?
Yes.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Some affair?
Yes.
The show?
Yes.
Schla? Yeah.
Griffin?
No.
Heum?
Yes.
Thank you, motion carries. Thank you for very good work on getting us started on the path. Um number five, four, consideration of. We met, it'll be an intersection recommendation from O H M advisors. There you go. On the move to be. Screwed the recommendation from O H M advisor. As shown. Is there a second?
Second.
So it was a little long time couple for you, um, the study. Um, we had a number of all the questions about the intersection. And council approved the proposal to do a field analysis and. Uh back recommendations for that intersection. And Marcus is here to kind of talk about what, what they found and what the recommendations are.
So Cliff Notes version, it's getting late, but uh. Uh basically, the, the concern was centered around school drive off and pickup time, so the time is my recommendation is to. Extend the, um, the full signal cycle time from sixty seconds to seventy seconds during the, that half hour in the morning. And then our score of these, so some worry five eight fifteen and then again from three to three thirty. Um, and adjustment done would provide five additional seconds, um, for the. Meterview or the school drive, uh, green time and also five additional seconds for the, um. Next ground or. If you stretch that out a little bit, you, there's some advantages because you almost have to start time, but once traffic's moving. You get a few more cars through, um. It had to be balanced with the, the single time advantage specifically, but also Baker. Uh, so that's truly about what you can do without disrupting, um, traffic along the entire corridor. So what our condition would be, uh, it's relatively simple to, uh, adjust the signal timing. Uh, you go to the cabinet and pick up bums, um, so our, it would be to, to make that change and monitor it. Uh, for a while and, and see, um, if there's, I'm expecting any of the past was looking. We don't do it, there will be, it's not a huge change, but it will allow more time to hopefully, uh, we're not congested here. But they brought this to it.
One thing I was hoping to learn from this, and it doesn't seem like it was examined, but maybe it was, but it whether. If the schools were to add a second sort of entrance or second lane for those people coming, um. I'm looking at page one seventy-one of the packet. You saw a hundred sixty-seven people, yeah, kind of coming eastbound to make a right turn into the school parking lot. And if you look at that versus the sixty-six who are coming up, making a left turn. So that's two and a half times more traffic coming in from the top of this versus the bottom. And it seemed like one way to. Make that, uh, more equal, I guess, would be to have a second dedicated turn lane until that two and a half times more traffic comes to. You know, additionally determined to, I don't know if that's something that was considered with this, if that's in. If you would agree with that assessment as to proposed solution or additional study would need to be made to determine whether or not that would improve the situation.
Yeah, I mean, I would, if you add stacking. Uh, or queuing, uh, space that yes, that would, would help. That wasn't, you're, you're correct, that wasn't part of the scope, that would be a pretty significant capital project to, to either own there. Uh, that's something that we could look at, but I, I would think that there need probably need reasonable discussion with the school about. If it's even. I don't know how viable that project is as far as, you know, um, the finances to implement that. The time change, again, is as simple as adjustment on a computer, um, and pavement would lead to being somebody's capital plan. Whether it's the citizens of the school. But if, if that were, did, I want to pursue that, then we would. You know, take a closer look at utilities are there, home term is there to, you know, add, um. Stacking or turn lane, basically, so type things. Uh, well, we haven't got that direction yet, but that's all we can do. We might look at, we certainly could.
Would that time really be, I mean, needs somehow that wrote it there, you have the existing right turn lane, would it be something that only? Would be implemented on school property, they just added an additional? Or would it, would you have to do something to Dexter and Arbor though to accomplish that?
It, it could be either of those, I'm not sure. But you're, you're, you're exactly right, it's getting into the logistics of, you know, the campus and how the traffic patterns. Function internally, uh, so adding more stacking in the public right way may not be the best option, but that's a little more complicated.
Yeah, this is so, so you, without having spent a lot of time, you know. At Mill Creek in the, in the morning, um, I, I am guessing that it goes like. As folks are queuing up, um, for either drop off or pickup, I think it's one lane. I would think if you have two sets of kind of entrance lanes going into the schools. They'd have kind of way to get it down to that one. Kind of stacking way. In, in, uh, the internal navigation.
So most suggestive movements, the conflict or what? Will that turn in, in the, in the regiment? For the morning?
Yes, in the morning, yeah.
You said from sixty to seventy, if I'm correct, right?
Seconds, yes.
Seconds?
So it's an, it's an, uh, adjustment of adding ten additional seconds to the entire single cycle. Five of that being additional time for metal viewers much to school and.
It was forty in the primary direction and twenty in the, in the, coming home to school direction, right?
Yes.
You're proposing to make that forty-five in the primary direction and then twenty-five. Zach?
I actually have to say that I. Impressed with the level of service at this intersection, I would thought a bit much worse. Um, I'm not sure how it was measured, I know it takes so long for me to get going that way, but I actually drive here on River Drive. Over Z, um, there are days when it will be backed up to Dover. It's not every day, it's just special occasions, it's very common for it to be from Madison or Hudson all backed up. When we approved this, there was, uh. Comment that there will be discussion with the schools, you guys had discussion with the schools about other potential behavioral or other changes that might.
We have not, this was the first staff, whatever, I counsel, I'd recommend that signals change. Or just involve. Uh, the school or internalists are good.
I am concerned that getting cars moving through there faster increases the risk for collisions. That if there are going to be collisions and folks walking, the cars are going to be going faster, um. Uh, I guess a question for staff or O H M is, are we able to set this up so that we can undo it? For non-school days? I, I believe it's, it's school specific timing.
Yeah, I think your question is that there's. So, well, I guess what I'll say to that, you really shouldn't need to do that because the, there's detection out there, so if there's not vehicles. Um, queuing in the school drive of the U or on the home U, then. Don't, that's, that's second trips, so on a non-school day, even though the traffic is. Dexter and Arbor, there, it, it won't, um. You realize that.
And, and also as part of the C N A grant, and this is a couple of years down the road, but, um. The, the plan is to work, to get a size, they tell you is system. Which I think allows for more flexibility, I, I, I don't know the details of their, you know, software platforms or, you know, how, how, any of that works. But, um, from my change, their system is more flexible and, um, easily you can go online essentially and change. Um, the signal timing as, you know, someone with access to that, that program. Uh, this isn't going to include adding a, a dedicated protective left. Into there, so those folks are still going to have that split second at the end to shoot through, so it's not going to provide any relief for them.
Correct.
I'm always curious why no one wants to turn right and do a Michigan left through there. Sorry, just an observation. I'm done.
All good questions. There are questions for the market? Okay, motion by self, fair, I'll second by a lot, if you have the, uh, thing of revision. Please hold.
Yeah.
Hubbard?
Yes.
Some affair?
Yes.
Well, yes. Now?
No.
All that?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Motion carries. Uh, number five, consideration of the resolution. The request. Motion on the bottom, please, copy one and two. I will make the motion by on page. Resolution. Who is that? Yeah. Special questions?
Can anyone say if the M M L or the M T A is making official position on this? Um, I, I don't know about the M M L or the M T A, um, I believe the M M E is the saving, uh, stamp and close support. Um, a lot of the, um, work that will be to spread our, we've been together. Um, was done by, by city manager community in those communities where, um, they are over the sixty percent. Water ratio, um, there, you know, have been. Quite a few members who, who have reached out and, um, are, you know, looking for support. From, from other communities that are above sixty, fifty percent, um, to encourage the water sector to. Kind of go back and revisit, um, what they were initially looking at and chose to mix. So I'll, I'll start by saying, um. In September twenty twenty, I was at a M M L meeting, we had a representative from Governor Schneider come in. And they were feeling bad about poisoning all the people in plants, they wanted to create a state fund to fix water stuff. Where the proposal was to have something like everyone who has a water tap in the state to pay. Ten to twenty dollars a year to the state fund that does it. Their representative gave the pitch on why this is best, if your thing goes bad, we'll do it, they can use it to do improvements. I was the first person to speak, John Lamaki was very clever and just kind of said back, let her do it, I tore in. I said, we have been raising our rates significantly over the past decade plus. To put it in a good position and this will completely screw us, we're doing the right thing. Um, I don't know if my visceral comments had any effect, but they, it never happened. Um, in, in this case. I am generally reluctant to. All the state government want to do except through our official. Channels, which in this case is the, the M M L. Um, but we, I shared the same comments with the representatives when we were at the M M L meeting. Couple of months ago. That's all.
What are the questions?
I think, I, I mean, I alluded to my. Disagreement with the, the contrast between two business events related to subsidizing hotel admin and then in the same meeting. Um. Kind of going completely contrary to that, um. I won't vote in support of this, um. I think one thing that I just cannot, just. But I cannot verify that's written in this resolution where it says that. Basically, the people who are in this, the municipalities are in a position of having a, a fund greater, you know, funding greater than sixty percent. It's because they took financially difficult steps to stabilize it and because they followed best practices and because they made tough decisions and followed those best practices. I can't. I have no evidence to support that those communities that have, that are less than sixty percent funded. Were also doing those same, those same things that might have been influenced by something outside of their control, um. So to me, it reads very much. I don't know, the wording is problematic to me. I'm not fine to think the state should be giving anybody any money, if in cap, if, if in fact, we're in a better position because we just did better. Then I don't think the state should be giving money to people who intentionally didn't do better, and that's the way the resolution is to me.
Joe? From, from what I remember. I think around two thousand, two thousand and two. We were a pretty high, pretty high percentage funded. And this is all from memory, I could be wrong, just, just so I know you can check and find out. What I remember is that we were pretty well funded at the beginning of the two thousands. Over the course of the two thousands, we made the recommended contribution from the state from MERS. All the way through, and we got to about two thousand and ten and we are at like fifty percent of it. Even though for ten years we had done exactly what it was. That the actuarial table set, the contributions were, you know, year by year, year by year, we went along and we did all those. At that point. We started saying, we're going to contribute the additional money and. We made additional contributions over the course of the next, since they, and there's whatever it was, and worked really hard. To get that percentage up, so. Uh, I can't say what the communities have done, I can say with certainty. That the only reason that we are where we are is because we took extraordinary efforts to get real job. I mean, that's just, that's not an opinion, that's a, that's a verifiable fact. We made payments above and beyond what we're supposed to to get to where we are, we, we put in place a goal to set aside money year after year. To, to get that on how, because we knew we were going to be, uh. A long-term debt that we were needed to be able to fund, so I. I, I can't agree that, that I was saying, you know, that this was because of. Maybe other communities might, maybe they had different experiences, but as far as I know, making the payments we were supposed to make. We fell behind, we got significantly behind and. Literally exactly what the resolution says is reflective of the experience at least in Dexter, so. Literally exactly what the resolution says is reflective of the experience at least in Daxter. So.
Yeah, so a couple of things. We we need to, obviously, if we pass this. The motion cover that we're stopping out of where local government didn't claim incident accident, that's a liar, understood. We we could modify. So whereas to not talk about anybody other than ourselves. And if those listen, just reflect our practices. And what we've done, how we feel as opposed to, for example, this statement being made about. You know, we really can't speak for others, right? We know what we've done, right? We could have motion ready to phrase it so that it reflects our, in fact, I would curate that. That it looks like we're actually thinking. I would, I think that's worth considering if you guys think it's a good idea. And I'm sure we can trust staff to do that. Justin can do it. Well, and, you know. To not. Be forgotten. I mean, our our employees agreed to bridge down to a lower level where you help us achieve that mission, but.
Yeah. And again, that was, that was.
Which was, which which I would guess a lot of communities. I don't know if they did it or not. That was. There was a few mistakes, right? Our city council. I mean, when they decided they not let us pay into it anymore either. So to your point. I mean, depending on the decisions that we made. That landed us where we were at, but together, we. We can't find it together. That hasn't been easy for anyone. So now we have employees that don't have it. So I mean, there's, it takes a lot to bring that to where it needs to be.
One of the other things that was significant in the first years that I was here, we were getting cost of living increases, which was increasing our uncut liability every year. And we we thought we'd add.
Include instructing staff to modify and subject your flex our our story and. The communities.
Yes.
Okay, Justin, please go and approve the resolution.
What's number?
Yeah.
Michelle?
No.
Alda?
Yeah.
Carter?
Yes.
Griffin?
No.
So fair.
Yes. Motion carries? Point of clarification. The last. Be therefore. Appears to direct the legislator and governor to support it. I suppose the intent that that asks the legislator and governor. To do it as opposed to directing them is how it reads. I have a knowledge of the legislative governor what to do. Yeah. Very close, yes.
Okay. Is this still eight? Same point? And six is discussion of trying to do all objectives.
That, do we have a dashboard of our current ones? This little thing how we're doing with.
Yeah, so 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 what we've included, what we, you know, included in the gold sighting, we're excited, just. Was the the grid that indicated, you know, what we had done with.
Okay, oh, an internal dashboard, but not an external one. I think I'm on your website.
Correct.
Well, yes and no, because it is, there is, it's not a grid per se. Or is it? No, it is.
Was it?
Yeah.
Okay. Like they're spreading sharing. Sweep the song and make motion.
The, I'll see someone to make a motion. Yep, so my question, the twelve thousand dollars that was donated, has the the donatee. Been request asked if it's okay for this money to go to a different location?
Yes.
And she said it, okay?
That's that's what I understand. I think the goal is still to include one, a little free park. But there 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 will conversation with with the. Donate order to use some or all for the installation.
Okay, the eleven thousand nine hundred eighteen, that's just for the equipment itself. That doesn't include any site work preparer or.
Correct, which we plan to have the EPM deal.
Okay, do we, do we have an idea how much?
Say me.
A lot extra much.
So 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 I actually, we have, we'll have an item at the next meeting to approve a bid for playground launch. Which will include the additional installation here. But the goal is to have the EPM do the excavation. Will they install a playground timbers, which, you know, the where the cost of several format horse is. The player company, Sign Flare will come in, do the installation, and then we'll have the. Most floor work come in after they're done.
All right, and we're gonna make sure that the boundaries are adiatic, right?
So so. We 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 will allow for that space that some of the other locations in the community park has. To give, you know, an even access to the adjacent.
Yeah, I I ask.
So so the diagram that Sign Flare sent over. But they, you know, they're not doing the timber installation, including that, so.
Also, I recommend the benefit of the work presented more not having a sharp ninety degree here in corner like that. And get weed looked down in the dirt and that's gonna be attractive nuisance for the kids. That's all. Thank you.
What a question. Danny?
Yeah. What did we decide on this occasion? I thought, what was it? Was there a conversation about moving the rockers? Putting this thing there? Did we decide that was less feasible?
There's a thing, well, there's really, I think the transplant the rocker, bringing in team player to have to do that. The thing's, we had. Unzless all the rockers move them, put it in their place that. Friends, I think at the end of the day, we're just a lot similar.
And then I haven't paid attention recently. Has that rocker been replaced with the dark?
So we we have ordered replacement work, but we're waiting to figure out when that will be.
Also for Son of Faro?
Yes.
Griffin?
Yes.
Alda?
Yeah.
Michelle?
Yes.
Shla?
Yeah.
Carter?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. We're back around the hot range of the station. Is there anyone in the house? Anyone online? Would you like to speak out? Nelson Thomas, starting over here.
I mean, council rules. I'm hoping that we will stay with what we have with small adjustments. While there are some council rules that are specifically ignored and followed, even though they say. Council member shall not participate publicly to oppose decisions I leave that council. I think that's important, even though, even though they're not forced, they're not following, I think norms and behaviors are core. And they help to set the conversation and the expectation regardless of whether or not on an individual basis they are followed through.
Yeah, I just wanna make a brief statement, explanation of why I wasn't at the work session. And it's sort of following up on what Joe said. I mean, I think everybody knows that the council rules are something that I have had interest in looking at, making more professional, more uniform. I spent time outside of this. Outside of meetings with with other council members talking about them, but I could not in good faith come here and discuss them tonight when there are people at this table who I truly feel have broken the trust in this room. We have a council rule that says abide by the decision of council once a decision has been made and resist the temptation when you disagree with the decision to try and undermine the decision, which is what I feel is directly happening right now. And. I I think it's just a further effort to kick the can down the road, as we always say, delay, delay, delay. I mean, we are here with the decision made. And we need to move forward. And I'm really struggling to sit here and continue to work together despite our differences, when I feel there are people at this table who won't do that.
And second that.
That. Sometimes when somebody's told they behave badly, they don't behave badly. Let's see, I I would hope that as we. Restrike the the payment margins in town that we try to see if there's a way to fit a bike lane on Baker that would increase. The accessibility in that area for folks on bikes and reduce the lane width, which would slow travel speed, which would make it safer for them to invite the courses. I will point out that we had a prearranged agenda item. Our prearranged public participation that went fifteen minutes over the ten minutes that we'll say we're supposed to go. I believe two years ago, we had talked about. Working to provide better support to student representatives with onboarding and mentorship. It's something I don't recall what happened to that. I think we ought to do that now before we. Lose the current batch of folks for the new ones coming on. For those of you on the user group, I highly recommend that you. Educate yourself with the the special tweaks and concerns of fire station design. There is a fire station design conference in St. Louis, Missouri, coming up pretty shortly. Firehouse also does online webinars and Piero has online webinars that you can watch from your house. Let's see, and lastly, I I will be leaving the room when we do other religions in the future. I love the country, warts and all. The fellow who wrote it, though, did not like immigrants and part of his purpose for doing that. Was especially he was not impressed with the blood of the Irish, Italian, or Eastern Europeans coming to America. And I don't support that. That was in his heart, is part of motivation. Also, like thirty to forty percent of our country, when it comes to religion, I am none, so I am going to be stepping out for that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. Uh, two different opinions. I got up to retrieve myself. I apologize for having a tickle in my throat. The drinking fountains selected me and the drinking fountains to the right. Neither one of them works. Do we?
Yeah, we're 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 wearing that comment. That's what's done.
Is there any public drinking fountain here at this point that's working?
No, not here. I mean, we have a cap.
Right, right, sorry. And I guess that's the comment about rules. I'll just say we also have a norm that reads council members shall debate issues, not persons, and on more than one occasion. I have, my character has been attacked and my person has been debated. So I find it curious that tonight is the meeting and recent actions. Are the reason that you all care about the norms and that? Sure, um, thank you, um. But what I have here and. Okay, I'm gonna make a comment about that comment and then move to what I wanted to say, that it is interesting coming from somebody who also has. Made it agenda items to attack people specifically. But on the other note that I wanted to make is that tonight, yet again, I was very proud. And I want to thank the work that our staff do. Through multiple items in this, in this packet alone. The funds for water and sewer and our upcoming rates. Communication about water tower work that is coming up. Helping residents understanding that and the the care that goes into one-to-one. Work work with the resident. The check fraud issue, the pension programs. Our staff are proactive, our staff are thorough. There are times, multiple steps ahead of the game and. The the success of the city is really because of that. So I just wanted to take the time to thank them.
Thank you. Well, thank you. Okay. We have noted for the convenience, so. Second message now, Paul there. Didn't remember saying hi, please.
I am.
Those most.